I'd like to call to order the January twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three Powhatan County Board of Supervisors meeting. If Mr. McClung would help us out with the invocation, and if Mr. Williams would do the Elite Pledge of Allegiance, I'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you for this great day in Powhatan. Let's have a good night tonight. Let's do the work of the people and be with the right to this room. Amen.
Thank you. Are there any requests, postponed agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes in the order of presentation? Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
I had asked to have item H removed from the consent agenda. I've resolved the questions I had about that, so I'm happy to have it removed.
Okay, wonderful, great, thank you. You got that, Mr. Sharn? Okay.
Yes.
Then we need a motion. Thank you, Mr. Cox. The second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The approval of the agenda, agenda. Mr. Sharn?
Yep, just one brief update for you tonight. The Firefly broadband project to extend high-speed internet to the county. It's been underway. So where we are right now, ten miles of underground fiber have been laid. That's the backbone primarily in Carthersville, Duke, and Trent Home Road areas. No connections to homes yet as they're laying the backbone, but hope to start to see those soon. They've also completed twenty-nine miles of network design for the next phases and done twelve miles of field data collection that will aid them in deploying that. So I've also reached out to Firefly and trying to get them at our next available board meeting to give a more thorough update on their progress and when we'll start to see some connections to homes from that.
That's great news. Great news. Next on the agenda, presentations.
We have one recognizing the service of Ms. Josephine Goodman on the Powhatan County Electoral Board. So if she would like to come on down, I'll read this and we will present it to her. And it starts, whereas Ms. Josephine Goodman has deep family roots in Powhatan County and has continued her employment and community service in Powhatan County over many years. And whereas Ms. Josephine Goodman, recognizing her many years of dedicated service to charitable causes in the Powhatan community, was honored as the twenty-seventeen Powhatan Christmas Mother. And whereas for over thirty years, Ms. Goodman performed many functions on behalf of the Electoral Board in support of free and fair Powhatan elections. These duties included serving as an officer of elections, precinct assistant chief, and chief of elections. And whereas in February twenty-eighteen, the Powhatan County Democratic Committee nominated Ms. Josephine Goodman to serve on the Powhatan County Electoral Board. And whereas the Powhatan Electoral Board performs critical functions to safeguard fair and free elections, the bedrock of our American democracy. These functions include the appointment of the Director of Elections and Support Staff, the supervision of training for precinct election officials, monitoring of all election procedures, and certification of election results. And whereas Ms. Josephine Goodman made history as the first African-American appointed to serve on the Powhatan County Electoral Board, being sworn in at Powhatan's historic courthouse on February twenty-seventh, twenty-eighteen by Powhatan Circuit Judge, the Honorable Paul W. Sella, witnessed by many family, friends, and community leaders who filled the courthouse. And whereas US Senator from Virginia, Tim Kaine, and Virginia Governor Ralph Northam both recognized with letters and proclamation, Ms. Goodman's historic achievement as the first African-American appointed to Powhatan's Electoral Board. And whereas Ms. Josephine Goodman joined the Powhatan County Electoral Board beginning in February twenty-eighteen and provided exceptional service, including serving as vice chair throughout her term, which ended in December twenty-twenty-two. Now therefore it be proclaimed that the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors hereby expresses its sincere appreciation of Ms. Goodman for her historic appointment to the Powhatan County Electoral Board and for her tireless, dedicated, and faithful service to the voting and election process in Powhatan County. Adopted by the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors, January twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three.
Citizens of Powhatan County, we appreciate all your service for the citizens and the voters. On behalf of the Electoral Board, I give you a small token of our appreciation and your service to the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I just want to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors here at Powhatan County and the many family and friends that turned out tonight to show me some love. And I have really enjoyed serving the community. And I want to thank my husband for his support and my children who came from far and near to be here tonight with me. And I will continue to work in the county because that's what I think I was designed to do, be of service in Powhatan County or wherever I may have been. So again, thank you all for showing me some love.
Ms. Goodman, thank you for your service to this county. Just a moment, sir. Thank you very much for your service, your dedication, and your family's dedication. Because it goes beyond you and your very intricate part, as your husband is next to you. But it's a family deal with the Goodmans, and I've known that for years. Thank you very much. Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Ms. Goodman, I just wanted to express my appreciation for everything you did and look forward to everything you're going to do for us going forward. I would like to comment, if you've served on the Electoral Board with Frank Flanagan, you deserve everything you get. Thank you so much.
Next on the order is Dr. Pandow from Reynolds Community College with a update for the year.
Barbara Brown, and I am your elected, or your appointed representative to the Reynolds Community College Board. And I'd like, I'm very happy to present the president tonight to speak about some of the updates. Reynolds is celebrating its fiftieth year. And there's a lot underway, as well as letting you get a little bit of a glimpse of what it means to have these educational opportunities available to our citizens here in Powhatan. So, Dr. Paula Pandow.
Good evening. I don't have a clicker. And I don't have mystical powers. Good evening, everyone. And is the presentation up? Or going? There is a presentation. It's a brief but good one. All right. Okay. Slideshow. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me a little time this evening to share with you some of our updates for Reynolds Community. Where am I? Where? Oh, there we go. Okay, thank you. Oh, all right. It's got a little delay. I want to begin by thanking Dr. Barbara Brown. You made an excellent choice by having her represent Powhatan County. And certainly her background is helping us. She sits on our Academic and Student Affairs Committee, helping us ensure that our curriculum stays fresh, that the things that need to go are going, the things that need to be added are considered, et cetera. She's been a wonderful addition to our board. Thank you so much, Barbara, for being here and for your service to the board. All right, I'm going to get this down. As Dr. Brown mentioned, we are in our fiftieth year. And in our fiftieth year, we're going to have a lot of fun. We've had a lot of fun looking back at some of the hairstyles and the different kinds of things that we've been doing, having different celebrations marking our fiftieth anniversary. We would invite you to come to Garden Fest, which will be held on the Goochling Campus later this spring. But what I'm here to talk to you really about is our progress, the progress that we have been making as a college. And specifically what we're doing in Powhatan and students from Powhatan, what they're, what they're doing and how they're engaging with the college. As you can see, this is our demographic slide. Our student body is as diverse as ever. And how they're choosing to access the college is rapidly changing post-pandemic. I'd like to say post-pandemic, but my mom has COVID. So getting out of the height of a pandemic. Almost ninety percent of our students are choosing to take at least one of their courses online. That used to be about fifty percent back in twenty-nineteen. Large percent of our students attend part-time. Thirty-five percent of our students are twenty-five years and older, meaning more people. What was deemed the non-traditional student is becoming more and more traditional at the college. Fifty-seven percent of our students report having some sort of food or housing insecurity, very important for our scholarship offices, et cetera. Kind of, and fifty percent of our students are now identify as a racial, racial or ethnic minority, very diverse student population. And we, we mention that because, okay. For many of our students, the word student is not the first in their identity. Many of our students are working full-time. Many of our students are parents. Many of our students are caregivers. And so that's really important for us to understand because when student is not your first identity, when life gets in the way, it's oftentimes the first thing that gets taken off the identity. I'm a mother first, I'm a worker, I'm a caregiver, and oh, student, I can't continue on. So that's really very important for us to always remember with our students. We want to talk to you about Powhatan and our enrollment. This last academic year was a strong enrollment from Powhatan County. One hundred and sixty-one students were enrolled at Reynolds. Seventy percent, seventeen percent of those students are first generation in their family to go to college. Little over nine percent of our students from Powhatan County qualify for Pell Award. That is typically very high financial need. This past academic year, Powhatan students were awarded over seventy thousand dollars in scholarships and aid. This came in the form of federal aid, financial aid, but also scholarships that Reynolds awarded to students, emergency grants for students. Again, totaling a little over seventy-two thousand dollars for those one hundred and sixty students. So Powhatan students were well taken care of. But we want you to hear from your students. I can talk about what the college is and how the students are experiencing our college, but we decided to instead go to the students. Very brief video, these are three people, one currently enrolled, one that went through our Advanced College Academy, and a recent graduate from Reynolds. I pressed nothing. Well. While we're figuring that out, should I just move on to our dual enrollment? Because we're going through my presentation. My apologies.
Our apologies.
Perhaps while that's being figured out, I should.
You want to go ahead with the dual enrollment, Dr. Panda?
Sure, yeah, would love to do that, but I need the slide up.
Excuse us for the brief technical difficulties.
I know you have a busy agenda, so we want to keep. Can I move? This is the beginning of the. Am I moving the slides? There you go. I'll move them myself. Okay. Again, my apologies. Students, we're going to move beyond that one. So dual enrollment. Dual enrollment continues to grow. We have thirty-nine students enrolled in the College Academy. That's different than the number of students who are choosing to take a dual-enrolled class. So since we started the Advanced College Academy here in Powhatan, we have a hundred students who have graduated from the program, meaning they hold their associate's degree. They earned that degree several weeks before they graduate from high school. So we have a hundred students who graduated from the program, thirty-nine students who are currently enrolled in the program, but an additional twenty-eight students now, Powhatan High School, are opting to take a class. This is really important because for many of these students, the twenty-eight who are taking them, they don't know yet if they are college material. They don't know yet that they can master a college-level class. So think about that. A student who takes a college class while in high school, they're successful in that class, and all of a sudden, a different trajectory for themselves is imagined. So we have more, we have a lot of growth happening across our service regions in students choosing to take a few college-level classes. So that's great news with our Powhatan students. Okay. We've talked a little bit about where Reynolds Community College has continued to put its investments. And we've put our investments in the most high-demand, high-wage career options, and that's healthcare, information technology, and the skilled trades. We shared with you that we are putting together, we have been building skilled trades labs, new nursing facilities, simulation environments, and operating room, fully functioning operating room for a new surgical technician program, and a new cyber range and tech hub. Again, speaking to the great demand in this field, and that's where we're aligning our curriculum to where the greatest opportunities in our region are. Last year, I shared with you that Toyota selected us to become the twenty-eighth part, I'm sorry, the thirty-eighth college in the country that they partnered with to train Toyota and Lexus master technicians. That's a real feather in our cap. It's a prestigious program. We're excited. And so as you can see, we've been doing a lot of construction and, and so forth. What I'm really proud about, folks, is that most of this, in terms of the resources needed, came from once-in-a-lifetime HEARF dollars. Many institutions and organizations opted to use that money to just keep their organization as it was. We made tough decisions, knowing that we would be a different college on the other side of the pandemic, and made some tough, tough decisions early on so that we would have these resources to make these historic investments that our funding model just doesn't permit us to do. There's our pad for the automotive facility. Who knew concrete was going to become such a thing during the pandemic? So multiple delays with, with getting concrete and fencing, but we are well on our way with an opening scheduled for the summer for our Toyota facility. Really excited about that. Some final thoughts, and I really am hopeful we are able to get that because I want you to hear from your students. We are really on a wonderful trajectory. You all know the Build Back Better Grant that Central Virginia got. Reynolds is a key player in that grant in the research and development side. We hear of manufacturing down in Petersburg. Reynolds Community College, located in Biotech Park, we are in the research and development. So our piece of the grant is to develop the curriculum and the programs for lab technicians that are in high demand in our field. Okay. While colleges in, community colleges in Virginia and around the country are shrinking, we are outpacing every single community college in the Commonwealth of Virginia in post-pandemic growth. Every single one, not by a little bit, but by ten, eleven, twelve percentage points in terms of our students enrolling, in terms of our students completing, our students being retained, and the credentials that are being earned by the students. And we're very proud of that because that was a lot of intentional work on our part to make sure that we are meeting the needs. We have a new chancellor. That search concluded. This photograph was taken just last week where the governor formally welcomed Chancellor David Dore, who's coming to us from Pima County College in Arizona, known for their accelerated workforce programming. So I feel really good about the leadership that we have selected. So yes, we will be very proud and of our history and mark the milestones accordingly. But what we're more interested in is to continue to look forward. What does our community need from us? What do our employers need from us? That is where we're keeping our eye, continuing to look forward. My last slide is if you have questions, but if we are queued up, I would love to share. It's two minutes long. It's not a long video at all, but these are your folks who have accessed our college in a variety of ways and for different reasons. Fingers and toes crossed. My eyes are about to cross, too.
I really like Reynolds, so I thought it would be the best fit for me because I was a dual enrollment student at Powhatan High School in pre-calculus and trigonometry, and I really liked how it was set up, and I thought it'd be the best fit for me.
Well, my mom like introduced it to me, and I was like, this is kind of cool. So I was like, let me try it out. And I tried out for it, and then I got in, so.
My father-in-law was ill, so we took care of him for a while, and then he subsequently sadly passed. After he passed, I said, you know, I think it's time that I really seriously look back and go and get my educational benefits, you know, taking care of that. So I looked into the Small Business Administration. So I did that, and I, two years later, twenty-nineteen, I graduated.
I just learned a whole bunch of skills. Like, I developed really good study habits. So I plan on using that so that I don't have to, like, all my other freshman peers are going to have to be adjusting to it.
My marketing class was amazing. I mean, I liked all my classes, believe it or not. The marketing class that I took helped me to expand my creativity. In the Air Force, I thought very, very clinically, very analytically in my job. So to be able to think creatively, do something creative, be able to do something I didn't think that I was actually able to, to do was really cool. So I really enjoyed that.
With sports, it took up a lot of my time, so I stopped that. But I still like was like included into like different clubs, like diverse hands at work, and I'm the student representative for the school board. So I do that, so yeah.
This semester has been really good. I've had two in-person classes and one online. All the teachers are super sweet. Everything's set up pretty well. Like, all of my classes have been really nice.
You are never too old to, to go to school. I mean, I mean, that's the old adage, but absolutely never too old to go to school. And if you're too young, I mean, not too young, but if you're in high school coming out and you're not exactly sure what you want to do, this is, this is a great place to at least start, you know? There's a lot of flexibility as far as Reynolds is concerned, I think, because it's a smaller school as opposed to some of the bigger Virginia universities. You get more one-on-one time with, with your instructors, and it's a more personal thing.
I assure you, they were not scripted. We just asked them to talk about their experience, and we had to cut the video in the interest of time. But, but students who are, the gentleman, Matt, his wife is a business owner, and he now runs the books and does all of the back end stuff. So we're really proud of the students. And again, how they're choosing to access us is very different than even five years ago. So with that, again, I'm mindful of time, but if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Doctor, when you were with us last year, you pointed to the fact that y'all had transitioned to doing more certificates, you know, for technical training and that type of thing. Have you seen that continue to increase? And what percentages of that is, you know, the two-year normal academic degree that we're used to seeing? But now seems to kind of been moved over to the side, you know, with people getting their certifications.
Sure. Excellent question. We're actually second in the state for credential attainment that is outside of the credit side of the house. So number two. And those are short-term certifications that can go from five weeks to fifteen weeks to one year, whether it's a CDL license or a Level One, Level Two welding certificate and so forth. So that continues to grow, second in the Commonwealth. And remember, we have schools like Northern Virginia Community College and Tidewater Community College that have far more dense service region. So to be second in credential attainment is quite a feather in our cap. What we are also seeing an increase in is students who are completing those credentials and deciding then to enroll in a credit course to earn a degree. Because it's a false choice to say it's one or the other. We have students who might take a short-term certification, but their dream is to open up their own business. And they're going to need that business administration or that bookkeeping. They're, they're going to need additional skills. So we're growing at a fast clip in both sides. But we are seeing a lot more people choose to begin in the short-term credential programming, for sure.
I know when you came in into your position, you were faced with many challenges. One was declining enrollment. And you had a pretty top-heavy staff that you had to deal with.
Yep.
To be able to balance the budget. You turned the corner?
Absolutely. We, in that first year, we cut two-point-one million dollars in salaries and invested every penny of those resources into the frontline where the students need us the most, advisors, faculty, financial aid, recruiters. That's where we put our resources, and we've not gone back to the old model.
Well, I'd like to congratulate you on that because you came into a situation where there was years in the making.
Forty percent decline over seven years. Forty percent.
Well. Are you going to help me out here? I missed the name of the young lady who's a representative to the school board. I need her name and contact information. We're going into budget season with school board, so any help I can get, I'd like to get.
Absolutely. We'll get you that name.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much, Dr. Panda, and kudos. You've done a great job. And I echo Mr. Williams' sentiments there. And I remember when you came in and to be leading the Commonwealth now in so many areas, that's a great achievement.
We're incredibly proud of that work and the We're incredibly proud of that work and the people who come in every day with, my favorite TV show is Friday Night Lights, so I'll always quote that. People who come in with clear eyes, full hearts, you can't lose.
That's right.
And that's who I work with every day. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Next presentation, our Commissioner of the Revenue, Mr. Jamie Timberlake is here to present on personal property, real estate and our assessment functions.
Oh, good evening, Board.
Good evening, Chairman.
Hard to follow that. So next time I'll make sure I'm in front of that presentation, but just wanted to kind of start the conversation. Katie, if you want to bring that up about the, our assessment and where we are with it. Oh, well, first, you're right. I wanted to do personal property first, so let me back up. Personal property, just wanted to give you kind of an idea. Last year, about this time, we were seeing some really crazy things in the used car market. We didn't really get into it until later in the year, but the good news is that things are coming back into a normal decline. Used cars are actually on the way down, which is what we would expect. The bad news is that they're still not back down as low as they were in 2020, 21, when we started seeing this increase. So we are on a normal pattern. Am I clicking or are you, Katie? Yeah. And so that breaks down basically, the, these are directly from J.D. Powers' presentation that they gave us about two weeks ago at a commissioner's meeting. All across the board, you're seeing the decrease except for the very small Toyotas. So thank you for Toyota for sponsoring the college, but they're still holding their value at a little higher rate than everybody else. So if you own a Toyota, which my wife does, we're still going to see probably a higher rate than the rest or a higher assessment than the rest of them. But any questions about personal property, I don't think, from my perspective, their counties are looking at ratios and all that again. I think we're in a good spot. If you want to talk about actually reducing a rate, it's not needed to do this. If we want to talk about it, it can be a real conversation about lowering our personal property rate, business personal property and that kind of thing for the reasons of lowering taxes, not to deal with increased or inflated assessments. So whenever you want to do that, I'm ready. Oh, different one. So now we'll go to the, do you have any questions about those before I go on? So now we'll go to the 2023 assessment. It's been an awesome year trying to put that department together, some great people that we bought on board. Hopefully you'll stop by and meet some of them as they're starting. We still have the assessor, chief assessor position vacant, which has been a little rough on me and my timeline, but that's okay. I really do enjoy it. People don't think that it really is part of what I enjoy and there aren't many people that do. So the role of the assessor is basically to just provide an objective, impartial and unbiased opinion about the value of personal property, or excuse me, real estate. Providing assistance to those who own, manage, sell, invest and/or lend money in securities for real estate. Appraisers assemble a series of facts, statistics and other things regarding the specific properties and analyze this data, develop opinions based on state regulations. And each appraiser has the assignment and the challenge of using their ability to put these analytical skills to practice, exercise sound judgment and communicate effectively. This is right out of the Appraisal Institute of the U.S. and also an IWAO, which is the International Assessors Association. Next slide is what do executives want to know or what does the public want to know, right? They always want to know, what are the numbers? How much more are we going to be able to generate in revenue this year without raising taxes? What is the average increase of an average house, right? Had a conversation with the chairman this afternoon. It was a quick one while I was traveling, but these questions can get you in trouble because they're not really what we want to be talking about. These are things that affect the individual person when you talk about a percentage, but when you try to do that across the whole county, each property is handled different. So if we want to talk about percentages of an increase to the county's value, that's a set number. That's, you don't manipulate that, but individuals hear that number and then try to apply it to their individual properties. And that's where we get ourselves in trouble trying to just put those average numbers out. So what we really want to be talking about is how adequate is our assessment system? How accurate are our assessments? How consistent are our assessments? What are some emerging trends that are happening in the market? What are the challenges or the changes that are distributed across the different classes and geographical areas in the county? What are the emerging issues? Are there threats that are out there? Are there opportunities that we can take advantage of? So I'll just kind of go through each one of those questions real quick and then give you guys and Ms. Karmick time to ask me any questions. So how adequate is our existing system? It meets the minimum standard. We're still using Stonewall. We have not converted over to Keystone yet. Once we finish the personal property book this year, which will be the second one that we've done in Keystone, that's when we're going to start looking at transferring the camera system, which is your automated mass appraisal system. The negative thing about Stonewall is that it's not going to be there forever now. It has been purchased by a larger company. I told you this, I think, last year at some point. But we've got about two and a half years before that system goes away. So we either need to fully convert into Keystone or look at some other options out there. And there are plenty. I mean, we don't have to be on the same system for our camera system as we do for the, for the personal property or the tax collection part of it. My goal is this year, after we finish that personal property book, to run both systems simultaneously so that we can see how Keystone compares to what we have and then make that decision by 2024 as to whether we're going to finish the conversion into Keystone or come to you and start talking about our options. Next slide talks about accuracy. So the standard in state code is 70%. If you drop below 70%, the state tax department is going to come asking you what's wrong, right? Like you should be doing some kind of accuracy testing as you go through. This slide is from the 2019 and the 2020 shows that our median ratio, we fall into those 34, I think it's blue. Yep, blue on the slide where we were at 89% in 2019, which is our off year of an assessment. And in 2020, we went into the blue with the 32 because we were at 92%. So we've stayed well above that 70. But what you really want in your accuracy is to stay in those high 90s, mid to high 90s. And that means that your assessments compared to sales ratios, your sales out there and your medians are as close to what's really happening in the market as possible. There's bordering localities that dropped into the 60% last year, just last year due to not doing assessments often enough. They were on a six-year cycle and Southwest, you see this a lot. We don't want to be there. We want to be accurate and we've done a good job with the contractor so far and kind of meeting that right at that minimum. We want to slowly edge that into a much better, higher accuracy, as close to 100% as we can. The next side slide is consistency. Some of you have heard me talk about a coefficient of dispersion. That's basically COD. That's basically, if you draw a line right down the middle, how far do we deviate from that one way or the other? The international standard is for our type geographically noted area where a little bit of mix of some suburban, some, you know, still agricultural and larger lots is 5 to 15%. You'll see we're in the 43, which is also blue, yeah, the 43. We were right at 11%, the 2019, and then 2020, we stayed right in there at, I think, 12, 12 and a half percent. So we're still within that ratio. The goal there is to get it closer to the lower number, right? You want to be closer to that middle where like properties are all categorized together and as close to each other as possible in that dispersion. But there's a pretty, pretty easy math on those, but most people don't understand how that accuracy or how that consistency is important. The next one would be the tax burden distribution across the county. This is another one where you want to be as close to 100% as you can. The current assessment, which we're still tweaking some of those final numbers. I'll go into a slide in a second, but we're at 95% overall or 94% overall. So we had about 1,000 sales this year, a little over it. When you go through and qualify each of those, which the state has a system in which you do that, that tells you how many of those are considered qualified. And what that means is new construction doesn't qualify. There's no way to compare what it sold for today to what it was worth last year when you just built the $300,000 house on it, right? So you have to take those sales out and we have a lot of new construction, so all of those get cut right off the top. Then you have comparisons for say something that was a multi-lot sale or a transaction that might be just from one business to another business. And if you look behind it, they're actually the same business. It's nothing but the development company transferring it to the home building company who then sells it to a citizen or whatever. So we go through that. What we end up with is about 465 qualified sales. And those, we take what they actually sold for and compare them to what we're proposing as the assessment. And that's how you come up with your sales ratio. That's what gets us to 94%. Now, there are lots of ways to break that out. Personally, I think the class codes are the easiest and the ones that make the most sense to, to most people, which are your residential, commercial, multifamily and agricultural. It's right out of state code. It's the same way they go in the land book. You just kind of move the numbers around to, to sort what's in what category. Another one is geography, east to west. Our magisterial districts pretty much sit in there. Katie, you can keep cooking if you want. I think they're not, yeah. So residential, we're coming in right at 90%. Commercial, 97%. Multifamily, we're still finishing our one big parcel. We only had one large sale last year, which most people know about, the apartments over at 288. And then agricultural, we're at 94%. The other way I talked about was geographically, so eastern, central and western, right? Those are the three different areas. We're still saying right around that 90%. Next one is neighborhoods. We currently only have two neighborhood categories that we use. A lot of people get confused. This is not a neighborhood as in a name of a neighborhood or a subdivision. This is what groups like areas together. So you might compare three or four subdivisions across the county and how they're selling compared to a different three or four subdivisions and how they're selling. That's what you create neighborhoods. My goal with this over time would be to create more of these neighborhoods to stratify those different areas so that someone per se in red lane is not getting compared to the same sales ratio as somebody in, say, gray walls, right? So you can break those things out and stratify that. And the last one, which most people probably don't understand, but is very important, I think, to us in the assessment to look across the grades. So you have different grades of properties, which is based on Marshall and Swift and what they're using when they're starting. Your largest percentage in the county is obviously going to be C, which is the middle, middle ground. And then you get into As and Bs of the much higher end houses. D and E would be considered something that might have a little more age on it or something like that, a lower percentage. But there again, we're all right there in that, that range and well within the state's range. The next one we'll talk about is transparency. So same thing here. The state's nominal tax was equal to 99 cent per hundred. Their effective tax rate for 2020 was 86 cent per hundred. We were at 88. So we were right there in that middle, meeting the standard. We fell into the 21, I think it's blue, yeah, the 21 category on the first chart. And then in the middle of the 11 category in the next one. So how do you view that? And this is the effective tax rate is the next slide, which is currently blank. Charlotte and I will be working on that this week. Unfortunately, we're just a little, I'm a little behind. I shouldn't say we, she's not, I am. And we're hopefully going to have that slide ready for you. I wanted to put it in here to show you what we can report with that. So once we have those final numbers on the actual assessed value, we'll then go in, pull out new construction and figure out what your effective tax rate is. There's currently a bill that I was actually at the General Assembly today, which will, if passes, which is getting a lot of support, will actually use this number in your reassessment notices. So notices will go out showing last year, the year before, and then the current assessment with a effective tax rate so that people will know. The goal of it is that people will know what the actual effective tax rate is on the new assessment. Then when you go into a budget cycle, the board would decide what they want to do with that based on their advertising rules and all that kind of stuff. But this is a slide I wanted to put here just to show that. And then the last ones are just talking about some trends. Knew this from a presentation a couple of weeks, weeks ago that was in on Zoom, but we had it again today. JP Morgan did a big presentation this morning, the feds and what the rate is now compared to what it was just two years ago or even a year ago. And there's still, you know, talk of it going up one more time before the end of this quarter. Another trend that's out there is using aerial products, flyovers, drones, special software to compare pictures to pictures. Met with multiple different companies this past year and it's just not something we can afford. The best company that was out there offered some services other than just assessment. It had to do with fire emergency services. It had to do with sheriff. It had to do with the building department. We all got together and had a meeting and basically decided that it's just not something we can invest in right now. But, you know, be aware that is some, some emerging trends that are out there and something we might continue to look at as it becomes a little more affordable. And then the last thing was in-house assessments. Across the nation, localities are going more and more to an in-house assessment where they, where they own the product. It's the number of contractors that are out there doing this work is dwindling, going away. We really only have three left in the state. There's a very small company that's trying to get their certification through the state, so we might have a fourth, but you know, just showing you that Powhatan is trending in the right direction with that. Next slide would be any emerging issues, and I break it out into basically two areas, threats and opportunities. The first threat for us is this is the first ever in-house assessment for us. So you have a lot of things that you need to overcome and, and make it through and, and we've done really well. I mean, the, the state has been watched us very closely and, and worked with us and had reports back and forth and very happy with what we've done. The second part of that would, I would say was a threat is doing a hybrid or bifurcated assessment. So I did reach out and get someone to help, help me with the commercial. We use the contractor. So it was a mix of the two. Some people could see that as a threat. The state again is also because of the company, the person that we used was very happy with the choice that we did. And in all honesty, they, they think this is actually a better system because you have more than just one person looking at the numbers. And neither of the two have any benefit of, of one or the other, you know, pushing it one way or another. So that was neat. Another one would just be the market, which trends to try and max out all of those qualifications. The, we want to stick to and try to use as closely the standard that the state puts out and not let the market try to drive us in one way or the other, but let the numbers answer for themselves. That's always going to be a threat because there's always things that are brought to y'all that are needs that people want. And we want to provide those, but we don't want to use the assessment or false numbers to do that. The last one is the opportunities that we've had this past year, which is basically to own the product and, and I think we're doing it. We've worked on very hard cleaning up a lot of the data. This is going to take the public's help. Hopefully this set of assessment notices, when they go out, will also help with that. We're going to try and push people to the GIS system so that they can look at not just the number that comes in the mail. They see that this is not a bill at the top, which is required by the state. But that kind of turns their, their trigger off, right? I would much rather not say that and they pay attention to the data and dig into it and, and then call us and say, hey, wait, you put two sheds on my property and that other one's my neighbor, you know, whatever is wrong with the data. Cleaning that up as we go through and goes along with owning the product will be better. I already told you the, the next one is the stratifying the neighborhoods even further. The more that we can do that and, and create more areas for those neighborhoods to, to fit in based on their sales. And, you know, they'll move from one to another. One year the sales in the neighborhood might be a certain neighborhood and then another one subdivision might be different and can move. So by creating more of those neighborhoods, it allows us to stratify and more accurately put increases. put increases or decreases where they belong. Um, and then the last one is just uh, this is a great opportunity. The state has had some changes in the last two months. So I'm not sure where this program is going to go, but I sat on a board um last fall and participated in a survey. The state is actually working on trying to create its own certification program for staff. As most of you learned um through last year's process um and some of the mistakes that were made, there currently is a requirement and a certification process for contractors of which I just said are dwindling and going away. But there technically is no state certification for staff. The only thing that they can go get is a international level certification, which two of our employees and myself are actually working on. But having something at the state level um that's easier to access, cheaper for us to attend classes, that kind of thing, is uh is going to be very beneficial and a great opportunity. Because the head of that part got a promotion, there's kind of a vacancy there at the state level. So it's a little bit gray as to what's going to happen this coming year with it. But I know the commissioner of revenues association and the Virginia assessors association are both locked up on it and and trying to push the state to to come up with that program. So when the people that do it every day are pushing for an education program, hopefully we'll be able to see some something out of that. And so the last side slide is just questions. If you guys have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them, but probably in the next two weeks, you'll really see all the final numbers. I wanted to have them all by this meeting, but we've been a little hectic, so I apologize. Next year, you will have this before this meeting. I would really like to go into probably November and December giving you this. And and as I said at the beginning, the other thing for this um presentation is what more you want out of it or what less you want to see of. I would like to see this be at least a quarterly um that we, you know, we're bringing something to you, telling you where sales are, what trends we're seeing, what trends we're not seeing, and it allows the public to be more involved as well.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams. I'd like to comment briefly where you said you'd like to do away with the part that says this is not a bill. Tell the truth, you're looking for another check, aren't you? Shame the devil.
Right?
No, seriously. You talked about grouping neighborhoods.
Yes, sir.
I think three years ago, you know, we had.
Sixty, sixty years ago was the first time I talked about it. I think three years ago we acted on it and created the two that we have. And and we've kind of stayed stagnant there with those two, but go ahead.
Well, as I understand, we, you know, of course, you know, you were working with me at that time. We had some anomalies show up in the higher price neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
And it was because of something we were doing on area and trying to do exactly what you're talking about, getting better assessments. But for some reason, what we were doing didn't quite work.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So when you talk about grouping like neighborhoods ago, so that you're doing more or less apples to apples, so you don't have red lane going against, you know, the Founders Bridge, for example.
Correct.
Are you confident we won't be having the problem we had several years ago?
Yes, sir. And and you remember that conversation was we had done it two years before that uh to address the market. And I had multiple emails back and forth with the contractor to make sure that that was reviewed and it didn't happen. The contractor just put out the assessment exactly like the neighborhoods were set two years before that. And this, that's exactly what I was talking about is that neighborhoods will move in and out of these or subdivisions will move in and out of these neighborhoods as sales dictate. And that should have been done before the notices ever went out and did not happen that year.
Okay, so that leads into my next question. You're using Stonewall, which meets minimum standards.
Yes, sir.
So that tells me we're not getting the granularity that we need.
So, but that's our fault. Let's be very clear, Stonewall can have fifty neighborhoods if we wanted. That's not one of their minimums.
I'm not here to say blame. What I'm trying to do is get good assessments.
Yeah.
So if the blame is on the board and we're not paying for something we should be paying for.
Right.
I need to hear that.
So, and that's what we did in two thousand sixteen. So the the, we were not paying the contractor to go that deep into it. We were going with kind of a top level and and that year we paid them an extra, uh, I I think it was ten or fifteen grand we paid for them to specifically break out that first set of neighborhoods. And now that we own the product, that doesn't cost us anything other than time. I mean, that, you know, right now we're playing catch-up on some stuff, but that's, we can do that. And that's the goal is to take another step and another step each year.
Okay, when you say we own the product, you say we own Stonewall?
No, I'm saying we own the assessment. See, before, if you wanted the 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 product of the assessment was written out on an RFP and there's a price tag that goes at the bottom of it. Our price tag is now static. Our salaries are set. If if I have a conversation about, you know, the now right now I have a vacancy now, so it's hard to make those steps forward. But when we get that filled, um, you know, that is going to be that person's main job is not the field part of it, but to go through this data and start cleaning up what neighborhoods start, you know, going together and creating more space, whether it's in Stonewall or, you know, any of the other products that are out there.
Right now, this is going, this is going to be something maybe discussed later on this evening. You run parallel systems with Cowen and Stonewall.
We are not in Stonewall at all currently. Excuse me, we are not in Keystone at all currently. We are a hundred percent Stonewall and every thirty days we have a conversion process that moves it into Keystone for billing.
For billing, oh.
Yeah, that's it. There's there's no.
The canvas system.
No, sir. We haven't started that yet. That's, we we got to get through this personal property.
When will you do that?
I mean, we could start it probably as early as April, um, if the personal property book goes well.
Because the camera system is something we paid for as far as Keystone, right?
Yes, sir, we we've already purchased it.
Okay. And right now, you have trepidation about using it, going live with it because there might be some problems.
And 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 maybe I'm gun shy. I'll I'll say that because of the personal property issues that we had with that conversion. And that's a, what, twelve, thirteen million dollar income for the county? You're talking about a forty now on the rea- if the real estate side messes up, we're in trouble. I mean, we're not going to be able to pay the bills.
Oh, I.
Right. If if uh if the personal property side messes up, we can limp along for a couple of months probably and still, you know, get things done. But if the real estate side messes, I mean, we cannot afford to do that. That needs to be a one and done conversion. And the only way to do that is to run the two systems simultaneously, which is what I'd like to start after we get the personal property.
How long, how long do you envision that's going to take for you to get the certitude that you need?
I can't even guess. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I can't, because we may go into it and it'd be perfect. And I'm like, and, you know, I'm ready for it this fall. We could run some tests in the second billing, but that's not the way personal property went, so I'm I'm just gun shy. Yeah.
I'm not taking a position one way or the other, I'm trying to understand. But you will have numbers for us in the aggregate for real estate and personal property?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll probably have real estate, you know, with bearing any BOE, you know, that kind of thing still has to go through its its system. But we'll have our our completed numbers by the end of the week and probably an effective tax rate by the end of the week. Yes, sir.
And the trends, I I agree with you. The trends are are useful, but I have to first start with the number.
Yes, sir.
If I see the number and I can't, you know, just doing a delta change between fiscal years, that doesn't tell me the reason.
Right.
The ideology for the change.
Yes, sir.
Change. So having the backup information is good, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox. You, we now own the product.
Yes, sir.
It's ours, okay? Pretty obvious that you're pushing for consistency and quality.
Yes, sir.
Are we giving you the resources you need to get that done?
Yes, sir. I I I feel like we are. We we aren't getting a lot of applicants. But but I, I mean, you said the position is there. I mean, we've just got to, we've got to find the right person for it. And we've done some of that damage to ourselves. So we'll we'll we'll, you know, we will, I'm not going to sacrifice the position to the wrong person or to have a person there. We're we're gonna, it's going to be vacant until we find the right person. Yes.
Anyone else? I've got a, I've got a question.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I just want to make sure I understand. There was a thousand sales this year, I think was the number you said. That thousand sales, you then said four hundred and sixty-five were qualified sales, correct?
That's correct.
Meaning there were basically resales.
They, so yes and no, yes.
Not new construction.
They're not new construction, correct?
So the new construction would be approximately five hundred and thirty?
No, no, because there's more in there than um just new construction, multi-parcel sales. So let's say somebody goes in and buys three parcels. Yeah, that the state has, I think it's twenty-one in their list. And again, I, the more information you want, the more I can bring to you. The state has a a list of what we call qualified sales. And what you do is you start with the entire list and the assumption is that it qualifies. And then one of these, I think it's twenty-one, and one of these twenty-one reasons would be a reason that it doesn't qualify. And you have to justify that to the state. The biggest one of those is new construction. You are correct.
Right.
But there are other reasons in there, so I don't want to um make you think that's all new construction, but yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. When you showed on the graph or the 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 screen up there, the east, central and western, you had eighty-nine, ninety-two and ninety-one percent.
Yes, sir.
Of course, the the higher the percentage, the closer we are to actual true assessments.
Yes, sir.
Right? And the accuracy part is a critical part of this. If I looked at the three things that you're you're focused on, accuracy, adequacy and consistency. In the accuracy, we seem to be relatively good at comparatively speaking by virtue of the one county or an adjacent county that only assesses every six years. So therefore they're going to be off substantially uh when the market changes as quickly as it did. And then in our situation, we're a lot closer to where we need to be. And I think your number was ninety is where we are, ninety or eighty-nine, right?
Uh, that was in one of them. Our overall is ninety-four.
Okay, that's really good then.
Yes, sir.
That's really good.
Yes, sir.
And then I'm going to switch back to the to the to the personal property real quick where it relates to automobiles. The value of an automobile, as we know, is going down in the previously owned market. There's, the NADA is your resource for that, right?
Yes, sir, and JD Power purchased them, so they still kind of operate under that guise of NADA. But if you go out and you're searching, it it's actually JD Power, but yes, sir.
Which is the largest research automotive company in the world, I'm pretty sure.
And the most accurate.
Correct. But they have different values they assess to everyone's car. Those values would be like a retail value, a loan value, a trade-in value, a clean value. What value is it that we use in Powhatan County to, for our assessment?
Clean trade.
So we use clean trade? Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you all.
Uh, next on the agenda, we have uh our sheriff, Mr. Brad Nunley wants to speak to the board about a grant opportunity for school resource officer.
All right, y'all, this is only going to take five minutes. We we looked at earlier this year, applying for a grant for a school resource officer was made available through uh Governor Youngkin's initiative on public safety in the schools. We have been approved for it. Uh, we will talk about it more in our budget meetings. Right now, the grant amount is sixty-three thousand with no matching funds. They are not paying for cars, but they are paying the salary. There'll be an opportunity to add some benefits to that also. I'm not asking you to accept, uh, not asking you to spend the money. Uh, yet, that's something we need to discuss. But I do need you to, uh, if you will allow Brett to sign an acceptance letter, none of the monies will be spent until the five, six of us have discussed that. If I accept them now, what we'll be doing is doing our quarterly reports on the money. If we decide not to spend the money, we can return it without penalty. So uh what I would need for y'all to do is allow Brett to sign the acceptance letter. And that's, if you have any quick questions, be happy to answer them, but uh I will not be hiring anybody until we've had those discussions together.
You got a question, Mr. Williams?
I do indeed. All right, I'm not clear.
Okay.
I know this. So we've received sixty-three thousand.
We haven't received anything. We've been approved to receive. Yes, sir. Yeah, I haven't accepted anything.
Okay. And again, the fences around that are what?
Really, they're very low. This was a new initiative. We basically have to have them employed as an SRO. They had to had two years prior experience. And like I said, we we will have the opportunity to discuss quite a bit of this while we're having our budget talks. But um I'm looking to not hire anybody probably till May if we decide to go this route. The money is available to pay the position. As you know, right now we have the five schools with the five school resource officers or, excuse me, six, but one of which is part-time. So we have two at the high school, one at each school and a part-timer at one of the elementary schools. This will allow us to place, replace the part-time position, which is a retiree with a forty-five month grant, should have mentioned that. So they do guarantee it for forty-five months. And we can use those monies there. We're going to eventually have to replace the part-time gentleman. He's a retired gentleman and came back and worked a number of years for us on a part-time basis. But this would be an opportunity to pay for it at least for the next four years.
For the part-time person?
No, sir. Whether we do full-time or part-time, but.
Full-time or part-time? You've got five and a half now?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so.
So you would be adding, so if we, you're projecting come May, you would put on another resource officer, so it'd be six and a half?
It would be s- six and a half for about a month, because school year ends in June.
That's where I want.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't, I was confused about whether you were adding on to the total or you were using for a position that we already have that would be going off.
No, I'm not allowed to supply of supply with this grant.
No, I didn't, I wasn't implying that well, I was concerned, but I didn't know about your person that was leaving.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that's that's where we are, uh, a- as I said before.
Forty-five months.
Yes, sir. And and with, um, because they're paying for the nine months uh of them as SROs. So what we're looking, what we applied for was sixty-three thousand dollars to cover that deputy salary, which which will more than cover it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chair.
I'm, I'm happy to support the sheriff's request.
Good. Ms. Carmack?
I have a quick question. It's more of a curiosity question. The uh resource officers during the summer, do they just go on regular patrol then?
Yes, ma'am, they do.
Okay.
They come out, work with us. Some of them are assigned to courts, some of them are assigned to uh patrol. And then we have assigned some in the past to assist with investigations also.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'm happy.
All right, well, thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, we are clean loan, not clean trade. Trade is the next uh level. We are clean loan at the highest level of loan, so I misspoke.
Got it. Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have public comment period. And anyone from the public, welcome to come out and speak to the board. You're speaking as an individual. You have three minutes. You're speaking on behalf of a group and five minutes. Testing, one, two, three, testing. Can you hear me now? I'll do better. Okay, thank you. Great. Do we have anyone on Zoom? Mr. Charlie?
Good evening. Stephanie Sellers, four, one, three, zero, three, Bridge Road. First, I'd like to say happy new year to all you guys and girls, um, people, folks. Um, and also I want to thank you for your work on the trail uh that's going through the village. That's been amazing this winter because the parks have ran me off with the mud, so I appreciate that with the gravel. It's been wonderful. I don't know who did that, but I'm a. I don't know who did that, but I'm assuming you guys. And now I'm going to ask you to have a little more uh positive fore- uh forethinking on another situation. So it appear- apparently, it appears that I may be one of the only people to have received a letter from Sun Tribe Solar. And after just throwing it on next door and saying, hey, what are y'all's thoughts on this? Not only did I get forty one hundred views, but a hundred and twenty comments-ish. And nobody's real happy. Um, they're not getting the letter. They're not, no one knew that five were were finding possibly five have already been approved in the county. And this would be number six. Um, so what I'm asking for is to think ahead on this as well. We don't know the repercussions that clearing all this, these trees, the erosion, uh, the creeks, the lakes, the well water that's shallow. We don't know what effects, not to mention the displacement of wildlife, which I don't see it as green personally. And also, these, I've done a little research, not a ton. That's what I'm going to ask you guys today. But these solar panels are coming from China, and they only have about a twelve year warranty. Our governor just shut down Ford because of the relationship with China. What are we doing in Powhatan? So I I'm just going to implore you, basically beg you, because I'm very concerned about my water quality and about my resale value, and I am a realtor. So that comes from a little bit of knowledge. And um, I will say that the the letter I got is asking um us to come into a question and answer period on Thursday, oh, no, excuse me, this Wednesday, the twenty fifth, at four thirty right here to meet uh the the solar folks and ask them any questions and and receive some answers. So I do, will use this as a public forum to let anyone watching this meeting to also know about that meeting, since not everyone's getting these letters. So I hope that y'all will take this serious. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Keith Book, twenty two forty six, Branch Shore's Far Sway. Gentlemen and lady, I was uh bursting with excitement when I saw item number eighty on the agenda, which is a letter that, if you vote on it tonight, will be sent to the DEP, DEQ rather, calling in a question, gross misstatements by the Green Ridge landfill on their permit applications. One of the misstatements made was, have you ever, uh, have any of your key personnel run afoul of the law? Which they said, no. Well, it turns out, one of their key personnel overcharged the town of Colony, New York by fifteen million dollars in landfill disposal fees. He settled with the state attorney general for one million dollars. They said they never had any, anybody on their key personnel run afoul of the law. First misstatement. Second misstatement, they said there's no streams or springs on the landfill where the landfill will actually be built, where trash will be. Well, as it turns out, their application showed otherwise, that the landfill disposal area consisting of two hundred and twenty four acres consisted of numerous springs and streams that would have to be, in order to construct the landfill, a huge underdrain system would have to be constructed to dewater these springs and streams and build a landfill on top of it, which would result in the bottom of the landfill only being six foot from the water table and having a direct connection with the underdrain system, the muddy creek, where a leak in the liner of the landfill will allow contaminants to flow directly uh into muddy creek. So I'm also very happy to see that Chairman Byerly will go up to Richmond on Wednesday to speak in favor of the landfill legislation that will uh change the law to require that uh any new landfill that will be built cannot be built uh within less than one mile up gradient from a private well. I applaud you for going up. I will also go up for that as well. In conclusion, uh, I have regular email conversations with the owner of Green Ridge, Jerry Cypher. And uh regarding these springs and streams, I asked him specifically about that. He said, we're going to try to get a smaller footprint to avoid the springs and streams. So they're at two hundred and twenty four acres now. See if they go down a hundred acres, they still get their landfill permit. What they're going to do is come back in ten years for an expansion permit. When everybody's dust is settled and no one is worried about this landfill anymore. So vote yes for the uh letter you're going to send to DEQ and hit a home run out of the park when you go up to uh Richmond on uh Wednesday to speak in favor of the landfill legislation, legislation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone on Zoom? Not seeing anyone else. We'll close the public comment period. Moving on to the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Appointments to boards, commissions and committees, Mr. Shaw?
Yep, the first we have is to fill a vacancy on the Powhatan County Audit Committee. Uh, the existing member, Mr. Jim Carver, is, uh, has submitted application for reappointment. Uh, no other applications at this time.
Chairman? Yes, sir, Mr. Cox. I believe the audit committee is designed to deal with uh issues that were raised in the audit. And we, uh, Charlotte, if you could come up, I don't think we have any issues, do we? If we don't have any issues, why do we need this committee?
I did.
Did. We have nothing, nothing. I think you and I have been on this committee for three years since twenty twenty and. No, no, you you removed me. Did I? That's right. I forgot your sensor.
You didn't miss much.
By yourself. So I've been on it by myself with Mr. Carver. So would you like to make a motion to do away with that committee? Is that what you're you're saying, or?
Chairman's prerogative. The committees are initially formed by the chairman, so the chairman can just say, I'm dissolving the committee.
I'm dissolving the committee.
Next. Uh, yeah, so the next is uh for the Board of Equalization. Um, again, existing member, uh, Mr. Blake has uh reapplied, no other application.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, Mr.?
Yes, sir, Mr. McCollum.
If we keep this uh committee, I like to make a motion to uh dominate Robert Blake as the nominee.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor of Mr. Blake, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
So first, under old business is uh zoning ordinance text amendment. Uh, this is for uh planned development districts, uh, so one that we've uh talked about a couple of times. Uh, so tonight, we have, now I'll introduce him, uh, Mr. Bart Knuckles, who is acting as our interim planning director. Uh, so Bart had a career of over thirty years in planning, um, primarily as planning director. Uh, and then after retiring, has been working in this interim capacity for various Virginia localities, helping them when they're in a transition as we are. Um, so he's with us uh temporarily. We're still seeking to fill our planning director position uh full time, but we're glad to have him to help uh plug in and and keep us along and share his knowledge uh while he's with us. Um, so he will present on this case tonight.
Thank you very much, and it's a pleasure meeting you tonight. Um, and thank you for having me. If we go to page seventy one.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for coming to help us out.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. Um, I'll be very brief. I know that um the Board of Supervisors has looked at this request several times al- already. The case is twenty two oh nine AZ, um, which is amendment to chapter eighty four of your zoning ordinance, an article for your village growth area uh of the county codes. Um, and as briefly stated at the, at the, at the um top of the page on your screen, the purpose of the planned development district is to create large cohesive master plan developments that incorporate commercial and light industrial uses with complementary residential uses. The district is to be utilized in the areas denoted economic opportunity in the Powhatan County long range comprehensive plan. I would note that both the staff and the planning commission is recommending approval of this. Um, if you would go to page seventy four. I believe, following the uh discussions at the December meeting before the Board of Supervisors, um, staff was directed to make some small adjustments to the proposed code. And on page seventy four, we added um items eighty six through eighty, excuse me, through ninety one, which were some additional uses in the permitted use section of the planned development district. Um, these seem to be areas that are uh economic development coordinator felt was very important to include typically um items eighty six and eighty seven, excuse me, eighty seven and eighty eight, which are your services are uh more small uh natured type activities. Maybe, for example, uh, commercial industrial services might be a, a telephone center, call center, something like that, or support services for technology. Um, your industrial services could be something as a, uh, I hate to use the term, the steel production uh assembly facility in um in Virginia Beach, but it could be something of a smaller nature that where somebody's assembling something, but they're not creating or manufacturing onsite. So noise, dust, light is typically not an issue with something like that. Um, on page seventy five, we removed two items under the conditional use section. Um, fuel, oil or bottle gas distribution and storage seem to be something that would not be conducive to a, an area that may have some residential components as well as frankly, retail components to it also. Um, we also removed the uh heavy, uh, which is manufacturing, assembly or fabrication. That's the heavy manufacturing uh of items. Um, again, not conducive to commercial or or some residential uses because of light, noise, dust, et cetera. We, um, if you go to page seventy seven, did do some clarification on phasing schedule. I believe that's been discussed. Uh, item twelve, uh, sub paragraph C, um, in which I'll read the following, the master plan shall include a plan for no more than thirty percent of the overall parcels acreages dedicated to the residential units constructed west of Route two eighty eight. Prior to any residential development, thirty percent of the gross square footage of commercial industrial must be completed with a certificate of occupancy issued accordingly. So I know thirty percent is used twice there. That is not uncommon. I've seen that in other codes. I've actually written that in other codes. Um, it's a starting point. Um, and it's certainly that it can either be discussed tonight or, you know, if you so were inclined to adopt the proposal, it doesn't mean that you can't reinvestigate those issues down the road. I have, uh, I think I've covered most of the highlights and the changes you've, since you last saw this. Um, if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
Mr. Chairman? Comment?
I would like to um move to defer this uh for another month for a little more analysis. Uh, I have considerable concerns and questions regarding the um some of the changes. I believe number twelve is counter to number ten. Number ten states development phasing plan, if development in the PDD district is proposed to be phased, the PDD plan shall include a development phasing plan that identifies the general sequence or phases in which the district is proposed to be developed, including how residential and non-residential development will be timed, how infrastructure, public and private, and open space will be provided and timed, and how development will be coordinated with the county's capital improvements program. So we have that, which basically says with the rezoning, we're going to get that. Then up here in twelve, you say for each phase, so what is a phase? A hundred percent of the acreage dedicated to commercial development shall be constructed and receive a certificate of occupancy prior to any certificate of occupancy being issued for residential occupancy. Then we go down and go the the section further where we go into the phasing schedule. The master plan shall include a plan for no more than thirty percent of the overall parcel acreage dedicated to residential units constructed west of State Route two eighty eight. So I think there needs to be clarity there. Prior to any residential development, thirty percent of the total gross square footage of commercial industrial must be completed with a certificate of occupancy issued accordingly. Now, here's my angst. Um, I think if we are going to have this planned development and we want to have some flexibility, there is, in my opinion, no way that someone can have one hundred percent occupancy in their commercial before they do anything with residential. Um, I I have no problem with some sort of a phasing, but I think to have it that delineated isn't realistic. I think if we go back and keep number ten, where you get it in the rezoning of what they plan to do, that that offers more flexibility. Um, part of the whole idea of a planned development is to have that, have a negotiation back and forth, so perhaps you can get more. Um, furthermore, a step further is I, the more I think about it, I don't really understand why we are completely fine with east of two eighty eight having no criteria, no delineation on anything. We can basically put as many, we can go nine units per acre, no commercial uh requirements whatsoever, no phasing requirements. Yet, in the other areas in the county, we have these phasing stringent thirty percent phasing. The reality is, impact is impact. If if the number of students or number of students, it doesn't matter, it doesn't eliminate it because it's east of two eighty eight and have no effect on the county. Um, lastly, conversion schedule twelve E. If if I, you know, who've looked at zoning ordinances for thirteen years, can't understand this, I don't know how anybody can. I'll just read this. Conversion schedule. The PDD plan may include a conversion schedule that iden- that identifies the extent to which one type of residential use may be converted to another type of residential use, and one type of non-residential use may be converted to another type of non-res- non-residential use. Such conversions may occur within development areas and between development areas as long as they occur within the same development phase as identified by the approved development phasing plan and are consistent with established extents of conversion set down in the conversion schedule. I I have no clue what that means. Not, not a clue. Um, so I think that this needs more scrutiny. Um, I know to our uh temporary planning director, you have thirty years' experience in, I know, doing planned development in other localities. Personally, I would like to see you take a more comprehensive look at this instead of what we did, kind of, you know. I think it would behoove us to utilize some of your expertise and bring that back to us in a month. I'm done.
Mr. Chairman? So did you make a motion there?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor. And the motion is to defer this to what?
Uh, a month.
To the next Board of Supervisors?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Cox. Okay, but you need to go ahead with that and then we'll have discussion. Correct, you got it, got it. Okay, um, so we have a motion on the floor to defer this thirty days to the next board meeting. We can do just a, a.
Don't need a second.
Yeah, and we can just do the, the.
Discussion.
Any, anyone that has any uh questions, debates, questions about it.
So are we going to have discussion, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Could I have a floor?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Um, Mr. Knuckles?
Mr. Knuckles, this reflects the comprehensive plan, is it not? This proposal that you have in front of us.
What I, what I've read of your comprehensive plan so far, it seems to reflect in many aspects what your comp plan is requesting.
The item number ten, eleven and twelve, okay, that deal with phasing. Remember, we have two different areas to face. Okay, if you are east of two eighty eight, you don't have to face it. But if you do face it, then those are the rules for ten, eleven and twelve, but you don't have to face it. If you are west of two eighty eight, then you must use C, which is the phasing schedule. Okay, so it's not inconsistent, okay, because you don't have to face east of two eighty eight. So if you don't face east, east of two eighty eight, eleven and twelve don't, don't even impact you. That is a developer's decision. West of two eighty eight, you must face. And therefore there are, there are the rules for phasing. So I was confused about this this afternoon and it took me a while to remember that we have two sets of rules. Because we have two different areas that we're looking at economic development opportunity parcels. Okay, and so I, I don't have any problem with those. I don't have any problems with the conversion schedule. If I'm east of two eighty eight and I have, uh, in my development plan, I have apartments. Which I might want to convert to condos. That's what that conversion schedule is about. If I have uses retail and I might want to change those retail uses to light industrial. I might have an opportunity for a small quiet box coming in, okay? Then my conversion schedule can set that up so that I can do that, so that just gives more flexibility. To the developer, but they have to lay it out in advance, that's part of their plan. So I don't have any problems with that. Now, uh, I do have. Uh, a couple of things that are interesting to me. When I asked, uh, our county attorney about the purpose, the very first box on page seventy one. Uh, and. I wanted to know kind of two questions. One, is this a requirement, if you have an economic development. Opportunity process, are you required to use this ordinance?
Excuse me, Bill, what page are you on?
Page seventy one.
Okay.
Right at the top, the purpose.
Okay.
Very personal.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
I ask about that, does it, are you required to use that?
Okay, and is it available to someone who is, for the instance, in gateway business? Can they use it? Because this is going into our, 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 our code and, um, Mr. Lagni, you had some suggestions.
Well, I, I gave some suggested language that says in there, this district is to be utilized. I suggested changing that to the word must be utilized. And at the end of the word says county long range comprehensive plan for any plan development rezoning request to make it clear. That in the economic development zone, this is your option. Because the question was asked by Mr. Cox, could somebody apply for something else? And I said, well, technically doesn't, this doesn't prohibit you from applying for some other plan development district. So to make, to require this to be the district, I suggest replacing the is to on the third line to must. And inserting at the very end for any plan development rezoning request. That would, that would make this plan development. Ordinance portion, the only option for plan development in the economic development. So that we wouldn't have an issue with somebody trying to use some other plan development.
On page seventy five. Now we're into conditional uses. I was happy to see the, 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 the heavy in, uh, manufacturing taken out because. That's manufacturing where the, the noise and smells and all don't stay on the property, it's good to have that going. But I don't think we should have an amusement park or a motorsport park number thirteen and fourteen, we shouldn't have a racetrack there. We don't want that, okay, and an amusement park has heavy amounts of noise and light, that is not compatible with a residential neighborhood. Mr. Knuckles on page seventy four. Uh, you added items eighty six through ninety one. Item eighty six says commercial landscaping operation possibly CUP, which is it?
Yeah, my apologies, I, I skipped over that, yes, uh, it was denoted by that. When we, when I was looking at this and it suggested that this may be a possible use. Some commercial landscape operations are fairly intensive. A lot of, uh, truck and vehicle traffic and frankly onsite maintenance of equipment. And, uh. Therefore, it may fall more into a conditional use permit under the conditional uses as listed than it would a permitted use, but. It could go both ways, enclosed in the building, if you're doing maintenance, not a big deal. But often that's not the case, so.
So eighty.
I just use that as an example.
Eighty six then should be a CUP? In your estimation because of the.
I, I would, I would think that's certainly probably more than a fifty percent, um, I would, I would recommend that more than fifty percent of the time, yes.
Okay. Having said all of that, I really, um, am, don't see a reason to defer this. I mean, the questions you've asked are, are, are answerable, understandable. Uh, we've been, uh, this, we put this off for four times. Uh, it mirrors, uh, the comprehensive plan, which is what we asked to have happen. Uh, so I, in my opinion, uh, there, there's nothing to be gained by waiting another thirty days. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chairman.
Um, hold on one second, Mr. Williams, would you like to say anything?
I'd just, yeah.
Here, McPlone?
No.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Carmack.
Um, question for my colleagues. Hopefully, maybe, why are we doing the phasing? On sixty but not at seven eleven and two eighty eight, and why are we requiring the, um, no. Commercial residential split, um, east of two eighty eight, what, what, what's her reasoning for that? Why are we requiring it on sixty but not, you know, east of two eighty eight? Anybody, I guess.
Chairman, could I answer?
Absolutely, go ahead, Mr. Cox.
Because that's what you asked us to do, you negotiated every bit of this in a comprehensive plan and you voted for it. I voted against the comprehensive plan.
Correct.
Correct, okay, but the, the, the reason for the phasing was your suggestion. Okay, and it was included and, and we, we went back and forth over that, okay, and so that is what is in a comprehensive plan. Is that there's, uh, to answer your question, okay, that was what came out of that negotiation, which you led. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I did not lead that, Mr. Williams requested that it get eliminated from seven eleven and two eighty eight. At a meeting, I never led that, did I vote for the comprehensive plan? Yes, you gentlemen did not, very clearly, but I did not lead. The discussion of having everything eliminated east of two eighty eight, that was not put on me, we can go back and review tapes.
Ms. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Cox. Ms. Carmack, I apologize, I didn't mean the entire thing was led by you. The east of, excuse me, the west of two eighty eight was led by you.
The phasing.
Phasing, okay, you, you do, you did not, okay, and so I didn't mean to, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to infer that. Uh, that was Mr. Williams's suggestion, uh, which, uh, three members of the board voted for it. And Mr. Williams and I voted against the comprehensive plan. And the reason I voted against the comprehensive plan, one of the major reasons was because it brought, uh, high density housing to Route sixty. That is what this is, and I said, no, so. Uh, so now I'm trying to get a reasonable. Since our. Ordinances must support. Our comprehensive plan, that's the county code.
That you didn't vote for.
That is correct, that is correct, but it, it is because of three people that did vote for it, it's a, so now I'm trying to get. The most reasonable, accurate. Ordinance that supports what you wanted east of two, excuse me, west of two eighty eight. And that's what we have here. Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox, anyone else? No more comments.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more comment.
Yes, ma'am.
You don't want the development east or west of two eighty eight, which is, is fine, you didn't vote for the comprehensive plan for that exact reason. Yet here we have an ordinance that truthfully is not obtainable. There is no way. A developer can accomplish this and the reality is that's. Fine, but if we're going to have an ordinance that nobody can rezone to. It's a waste of time, it's a waste of a developer's time to come in and spend literally tens of thousands of dollars as we have seen. When they, they can't accomplish it. So my point being is candidly, you don't even want the development. So why don't we just take a month? Have a gentleman who's done this for thirty years, if he comes back and says this is achievable, this is doable, I rest my case, we move forward. I, not a peep more, but to do this and when I look at this, I do not see how this is obtainable, achievable, no way. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Mr. Cox.
I object to the residential component, that's all. Now, if we go back and listen to the tape and I'll be glad to pull it out. When we were having a discussion about whether there would be any, uh, townhouses included. Uh, you recognized and said during the meeting, it's never going to happen anyway, so why do you care? Yes, ma'am.
About, I'm not sure, I'm not following what I say.
Do you acknowledged that this was not going to be a practical plan as part of that discussion? Yes, ma'am, we'll pull, we'll pull out the tape if you want. So it, it's, it's been that way from, from day one, that was the answer, so. This is, this is, this is, this is the plan, Mrs. Carmack, that you created. Not me, you created it, and so now we're delivering what you wanted. That's all, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox, anyone else? When I looked at this. And I read on page sixty eight. The proposed amendment, one thing that, that, and, and I by no means. Would proclaim to be an expert in this by any means, but I would. Defer to Mr. Knuckles with thirty years' experience without any doubt, but when I read this and I think about plan development. The one word that comes out to me on page sixty eight is this amendment creates a flexible. Zoning district where some of the specifics often dictated in zoning districts are, are instead stated in the plan development. Master plan, similarly existing PD district, the word that comes into play for me is, is the flexibility. And that's what I think, you know, we can have some negotiation or at least have the opportunity to negotiate. As opposed to a very rigid, and I agree that the seventy thirty split was. Something that was brought out, uh, in, in regards to. These economic opportunity situations, the one thing that I don't agree with is that. The occupancy. As this states, the certificate of occupancy must be completed for the entire commercial component. Before you will issue any residential. Certificate of occupancies. That I don't think we discussed and I'm not going to proclaim my memory as the best by any means, but that's why you do have the video. But I don't think that was part of it, I do think the seventy thirty split was, was what we discussed. I do think that we should have the opportunity to be flexible in regards to that. Um, and how you come up with. All one hundred percent dedicated to the commercial development shall be constructed and receive a certificate of occupancy permit. Prior to any certificate of occupancy being issued for residential, uh, occupancy, I don't think we ever discussed that. The, uh, thing that, that to me is we've been on this for quite some time. And I do think that what I would like to do, uh, that I hear often is get a little bit more information, get a little bit more data, get a little bit more. Dig a little bit deeper into this to find out what the opportunities are that we can create for economic opportunity here. I think that it's worthwhile to pause thirty days to at least hear, uh, what can be brought to the table by Mr. Knuckles. I don't think we, we need to rush into this and. It gives us an opportunity to, to, to really review the phasing component, that we could sit up here and debate that all night. But I do think that, that we should pause for thirty days and I'll agree with Ms. Carmack on that. We'll, uh.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
I knew you would, go ahead, Mr. Williams.
What does that mean?
I knew you would.
Just wondered if.
You'd been kind of quiet over there, I knew that corner was going to pipe up somewhere.
On my forehead, that's why I was worried about.
No.
Going back to the beginning of this whole seventy thirty. Bill's right, this wasn't something we thought of. Seventy thirty was something, I, I don't even remember who came up with it.
Planning Commission.
Who did?
Planning Commission.
I, I don't remember.
It was before we were on the board.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Let's go through the chair. I don't even remember where it came from, okay, but what the fear was. That we would end up with a bunch of residential and the commercial and never show up. And we had a situation, I think I cited this over in Goodson. You know, where they had to go back and address the same situation. But they implemented the phasing for the exact reason we did. Because if you're talking about economic development, houses aren't economic development. We wanted commercial. Last thing we wanted to do was to further offset. The imbalance that we have with residential and commercial. As you know, we got a ninety to a residential, commercial ratio. So. I didn't ever think that you'd have to do a hundred percent of the thirty percent and have certificate of occupancy, I can. I don't think that's what we discussed. I don't remember anything about that, what we did discuss and what I was pressing for at the workshop, and I remember it very well. Because the conversation became very. Very intense. Because I specifically wanted to put as much in the comprehensive plan. Defining what it is that we wanted. For economic development, and what I was told was we'll do that when we develop the zoning ordinance. So it looks like we're back again, what we discussed in the workshop. And we, in the workshop, agreed with the caveat that Mr. Violet pointed out. He doesn't remember and Karen, Mrs. Carmack doesn't remember either, I don't remember a hundred percent of the thirty percent. The goal was to do the staging where you could work through the project. And at the end of the project, you would end up with thirty percent commercial and seventy percent residential. And we wouldn't be stuck with a hundred percent residential and no commercial and a bunch of parcels out front that would never be developed. Because the pro forma is in the residential. It's not named as a commercial, we've seen this before with rezoning requests with the former board. And we all know what property we're talking about, we're talking about page wrote again. And when we talk about, he'll never, or excuse me, the development can never happen. My job is not to develop property for an individual landlord. My job is to plan for the county. That's it. So. If you're looking for more. So if you're looking for more changes, if that's, are you, are you looking for clarification? I'm not sure. But I'm going to agree on the one point. We never said you had to have 100% occupancy on the third percent. I, I totally agree with that. But the others, I'm not so sure what it is that we're going to discuss. Oh, then if you want to go back and change the comprehensive plan and redo this whole conversation again, yet again, then of course that can happen. That was my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
I got one comment. I wasn't on the board when the comp plan was passed, but sooner or after I was. But I do think that we need some flexibility on the 70-30. And what if it was 32-68? I mean, it was, if it, there's got to be some type of flexibility in the comp. And I don't agree with the whole industrial part being completely built before the other parts started to be occupied. It's, yeah. It's just, it's not fair to develop or to do that, so.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Flump. Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
I'm glad we're talking about flexibility. I want you to take a look at page 71. Right under, over on the right side, right under four dwelling units per acre, you have the list of things that are established in the PD development plan. Those are things that are normally in our ordinance, and you're required to meet certain specifications. Go down to the development standard, meetings of modifying, all kinds of ways that you can change the development. Irrespective of phasing, there is a tremendous amount of flexibility. So it's not a question of flexibility. Not flexibility at all. We have that. That's the whole purpose of a planned development ordinance. And it's there. I also would point out that the 100%, I don't have any problems getting rid of the 100%, but you don't have to have phasing east of 288. You don't have to. So that clause does never have, only comes into play if the developer decides they won't phase it. That's the only time it comes in. They don't have to do that. Don't have to do it at all. So that's a developer's choice. And if they, they choose to phase, and it says they have to have 100%, then that's something they've decided they wanted to do. We're not, I mean, that's, that's just that simple. East, excuse me, west of 288 is a different set of rules. And that's the 70-30. And the 70-30 supports what we have in our strategic plan in trying to lower the ratio of commercial, excuse me, of residential to commercial. Okay, we have a goal of getting to 15% commercial and 85%. That's our goal. So that's why there were limits in there. Okay, that's where the 70-30 comes from. And so there is, by definition, huge amounts of flexibility. Developers can do a lot of things that they can't do. Size of the lot, the district, how the, how it flows. That also requires them to do some other things in terms of having a comprehensive plan, not a one-off piece, and then maybe I'll do another one-off piece. So when we talk about flexibility, please remember the planned development world gives you flexibility. That's why you go there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You, Mr. Cox. Okay. All in favor of deferring this for 30 days, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
Surprise. Motion carries. That's doing their old business. Thank you, Mr. Knuckles.
Yep, next is the draft letter to DEQ on the Green Ridge Recycling Disposal Facility. So you have a draft in your packet there. Happy to take any questions if you all like modifications, changes to it, or if you all want to send it on as drafted. We're prepared to do that.
Any comments, questions, board members?
I have questions from Mrs. Carmack, if she's willing to yield for a question to.
Sure.
Was asking Mrs. Carmack.
Yeah, yes.
We'll go through the chair.
For the question.
Yeah.
But not for the answer.
We'll get it.
I know. Mrs. Carmack, we received a letter today from Betty Myers. Who is Betty Myers?
She is head of the Cumberland landfill awareness group and a resident of Cumberland.
I mean, you all have a good relationship, I'm sure, because you all have been working together on the landfill for as long as I can remember, right?
Somewhat, yes.
Okay. The letter that she sent to the board members, I'm going to read it into the record, so there won't be any mistake. This is a letter we received from Ms. Myers, again, who is a head of the Cumberland County landfill awareness. Palatine Board Members, my name is Betty Myers, and I have attended a few of your board meetings to express appreciation for your support, for the support you and the community residents have for opposing the proposed landfill in Cumberland County. I'm also in receipt of a letter to DEQ proposed to be signed by you, the board members, at your January 23, 2022 board meetings. There are portions of this letter that are very confusing to me, such as bullet point is unclear if Green Ridge and the affiliates actually submitted the request for a variance for the project. The last documentation I found on the DEQ website was a letter from DEQ to Green Ridge dated October 25, 2022, requesting the application for the variance. Knowing DEQ is sometimes slow to post items on the website, I e mailed a contact at DEQ and found out the variance application has not been received by DEQ. Therefore, the letter may be premature. The letter lacks clear specific requests as to what you are asking DEQ to do. Deny the variance, deny the part A application, or what? The letter lacks documentation to support several statements made in the letter, especially those related to claims of a negative impact as complex as those issues on groundwater and streams. I, as well as many other residents of Cumberland County, Palatine County, and many other localities across Commonwealth are opposed to this proposed landfill. There are also several organizations such as AMMD, CCLA Sierra Club, SELC, UVA Law Clinic, and others working with legal counsel to prevent this proposed landfill. Might be wise to verify with some of them the current status of the proposed landfill prior to sending this letter. Thank you for reading my comments. This is a long, hard battle. And misinformation can cause more harm than good. CCLA is Cumberland County Landfill Awareness. SELC is Southern Environmental Law Center. Mrs. Carmack, what is AMMD? Do you know? I think it's, has to do with the black schools.
No, that's Pine Grove.
Yeah, Pine Grove, yeah.
I don't know what AMMD is.
But I think that's, I think AMMD is related to Pine Grove. But I'll, I'll refer to you. So you've got these organizations that have moved where we are in this process to opposing the landfill. And we haven't conferred with our partners. Southern Environmental Law Center, UVA Law Clinic, et cetera. So I think her advice is well founded. We might consider, you know, if, if you're going to do a letter representing, and again, I have problems sending a letter jumping in into a process that's defined where it's titled to whom it may concern. And send it over to DEQ. My concern is, if we're going to send reports making, you know, assertions, there's been hundreds of thousands of dollars that have been expended doing studies, bringing information forward as part of a process where you have these different entities working together. And my concern is, I don't want to do anything that reflects badly on this board, that we would have done anything other than professional due diligence, and that we are good partners with this coalition that's working together to oppose the landfill. I don't want to do that. So I would like to, you know, hear from other board members, because I'm, I'm going to be very candid with you. I can't support the letter that we have in front of us, given the information that I have from Ms. Myers, and for the reasons that she put forward her concerns. I think it may be a mistake to jump in the middle of this and not have communicated with our partners in this legal process, administrative process, opposing the landfill. Those are my comments.
Would that be a motion, Mr. Williams?
I can make it as a motion, Mr. Chairman. I move that we do not send the letter as presented tonight, that instead, we communicate with our partners to continue our efforts to oppose the landfill.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Is there any comments, questions, debates?
I have one question.
Sure. Mr. McClung?
I did not receive the letter.
You don't have it in your package? You're too new.
There, there was a spelling error I saw on, when they sent it to you, so forwarded to you, but it was late, late in the afternoon after I saw that. So yeah, the initial one that went out, they left the G or something off your name.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mrs. Carmack.
What I would like to know is, and I discussed this with Brett today, did in fact Green Ridge apply for the variance? That was the question that was still a little nebulous.
And Ms. Shifflin was trying to get some information on that. Did, did we find out?
Correct.
Yeah, that they would, they would need one.
They do need one. So that was kind of the purpose of this letter, is to thwart off the idea of a variance. I mean, candidly, I don't need to go to the Sierra Club to tell me that we don't want the landfill joining us. I don't need to go to Southern Environmental Law Center to put a stake in the ground with DEQ. I, they're against the landfill, we're against the landfill, we're against the idea of a variance. We have our chairman going in two days to speak again for the House bill, I think with the double liners and the, um, within a mile of the well water. So I, I don't really know what we're going to investigate and what we're going to get by waiting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I presume to respond to Mrs. Carmack. So a question about what we know in seeking permission from the Sierra Club. It's called working together. This is an administrative process. Legal counsel has, you know, advised them that you shouldn't send this letter. So if they have legal counsel, and they have these partners, like the Southern Environmental Law Center, UVA Law Clinic, and as you know, anytime you get into a legal process, administrative process, you have to have a plan. And the last thing you want to do, just like, you know, whether it's a trial or whatever, you don't want to make mistakes in the process that may come back and decrement your end goal. I'm not a lawyer. That's why I'm sure Ms. Myers and her board, that's why they retain the services of an attorney. That's why they're working with the Southern Environmental Law Center, working with UVA Law Clinic. Because defeating these things isn't easy. It's complicated. It ain't just as simple as saying, well, we oppose it, and we think you misrepresented on your application. If it was that easy, we'd be out of here. It isn't. Now, I'm going to applaud Ms. Myers and CCLA for the progress to the point where we're at now. I think we're in a good place. And I'm just loathe to do anything, particularly after receiving this letter from Ms. Myers, that would hinder or decrement what we've accomplished and what we hope to accomplish going forward.
Mr. Chairman, switch. Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
I've already sent my comments in via the internet for the bill. This is going to be in front of the House. So it's not that we aren't doing anything. I, quite frankly, still don't under, this is a very technical area. Really is, okay? I don't understand exactly what the variance is about. I've asked for some information, and all I've gotten is a letter to whom it may concern. That, that's a terrible way to start off a letter. I really do believe that it is in our best interest, one to push as Palatine County, which we have been doing. Two years ago with Senator Sturman, I was down there testifying with Carson Tucker. So, Mrs. Carmack, you've had a variety of folks together. You, you've assembled a lot of people over time, and we've been pushing. But to take a to ignore the request of the people who are at the spearhead of this seems to be, to be unwise. That we lose nothing. Doesn't cost us anything. Doesn't change the momentum, doesn't stop Mrs., Mr. Byerley from going down to testify. None of that changes. And one of the real problems we had with the landfill and with their board was because they didn't want to coordinate with us. They didn't want to talk with us. I don't want to be accused of the same thing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, one final thing, real quick. The only thing that concerns me, I understand what you're saying, but Ms. Myers isn't a resident of Palatine. And I've received calls and encouragement from actual citizens of Palatine County who've kind of been the, on the forefront pushing this. So it was kind of, Mr. Lashney, have you reviewed this letter?
Not in detail. Because I haven't, I'm not familiar with the variance requirements and where the thing currently sits procedurally with the general. Fine with DEQ.
Okay. All right, so you haven't looked at it?
Yeah, I don't know where we are procedurally.
Okay, thank you. I mean, if nobody wants to send this letter, fine, you know, we don't have to send the letter. I'm not going to, it's not going to be a hill I die on.
I, I've got a question. Actually, I've got a couple of questions. Who, who wrote the letter?
Staff.
Staff write the letter? Who requested we write the letter?
Vicki Renault. And Mr. Book were a couple of the citizens that brought it to my attention initially about the variance.
Say those names again. Who, who requested this?
Victoria Renault. And Mr. Book.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, thank, thank you for that clarification because I think that's important. I don't believe either one of those people are on the board or in a leadership capacity with CCLA. Now, you're right, Ms. Myers does not live in Palatine County. She lives in Cumberland County, just like, you know, we have residents in Palatine County that don't live in Cumberland County, but they're opposed to the landfill. We're in this together. And I think that's the message that Mrs. Myers was trying to convey to us. You know, thank you for everything that you've done. Let's keep up the fight. But we need to coordinate and stay united in our efforts because we're much stronger working together than we are out there by ourselves. Particularly when we're doing letters that have been proposed in good faith, and I understand everybody's anxious to do something. But sometimes you gotta avoid that temptation such that you don't hurt what you hope to achieve. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Okay, the motion on the floor is to not send this letter to the Department of Environmental Quality, Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. That's the motion on the floor. There's no second needed, I don't believe. So, all in favor of not sending this letter to the Department of Environmental Quality, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All oppose? We will not be sending that letter to the Department of Environmental Quality. Thank you very much for the comments. Okay. Brett?
Next on the agenda, a discussion on the Keystone ERP system. So just a quick update, I think last we talked about it was October. At that time, we had Keystone working on kind of their large package update, which happened in December, towards the end of December. So since that time, through that, I think it has moved some functions forward, but others has introduced new issues or other issues that were existing haven't been resolved. So some steps forward, I think some steps back. They do have a running list of known issues, fixes, tasks that I've shared a copy with you that they're working through. But definitely still some frustrations, particularly with the functions in the Treasurer's Office, unfortunately, the pieces they use. So Ms. Becky Nolley, our treasurer is here tonight. So happy to answer any questions. I'm sure she is as well, entertain any discussion the board wishes to have on this topic.
Are we going to hear from Mrs. Nolley? Do you have any questions? Yes. Okay, fire away. Okay. Would you like for her to come down, Mr. Cox? Yes, please. Okay, Ms. Nolley? Thank you. There's a whole long list of things that are problems. And I'm not, have no interest in going through them because they're all very quickly get technical. But there's a, there's a couple of things that I'd like to get out on the table that seem to me to be of major concern. Isn't only the way in which Keystone captures your customers' information, they key off of parcel number?
That's how we used to do that. Keystone has converted us to an account number basis.
An account number. That creates problems for you, does it not?
Yes, it does.
Could you help?
Uh, what, that involves, all of our records were, the personal property was coordinated by the, your social security number. Your real estate was conveyed with your map number. Currently, under Keystone, when a real estate parcel is transferred, it is issued a new account number. So when we receive payments which come in electronically from mortgage companies, it's being applied to current year taxes instead of older year taxes. With personal property, the issue is with the social security number. We're not able to capture all of the taxes owed by a person when they give us their account number. For instance, myself, I have five different account numbers because I'm on vehicles with other members of my family. And so there's, I cannot enter my social security number and pull, and pull up like I, all of the accounts as I used to be able to. I have to go into all five separate accounts.
This is a real fundamental.
Yes, it's in code, the state code of Virginia that we need to apply taxes to the oldest year first.
But, but it's in terms of your system, in terms of helping, first of all, remember what's working today with Keystone is internal. This is external. This is the citizens of Palatine. Mr. Timberlake has said he's not even going to try with real estate until he can run parallel systems. We didn't run parallel systems. That was a decision made by a former county administrator, and this is where we are today. And so you ask them to use the system you wanted, and thus far, they've refused. They've refused. They want only to provide an account. They want to do it on an account number basis, which then is a negative in terms of helping the citizens of Palatine County. That shouldn't have been a decision they got to make. That should be our decision. We have an interesting world with the income tax folks at the state.
Yes.
How does that system work?
So once individuals file their income taxes, if they owe delinquent taxes, we submit a file to the Department of Taxation. We are put in a hierarchy as to the, when we submit that file, as to when we, if, when and if we receive tax money from people's refunds.
So we grab their refund?
We grab their refunds.
Okay. Were we able to do that?
We did not submit the file last year until March, and so that we lost approximately a hundred thousand, if based on past collections, between January and March, we lost about a hundred thousand dollars in collections. Thus far this year, we have not been able to produce a file to send to the state because we currently have two months of set off payments, which are generated from the rebates that the governor issued in October. We have November and December, we have two months of payments from the state totaling a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars that we cannot post to the customers' accounts because they do not have a process available to upload that file into their system. So my girls would have to manually key in over a thousand payments.
So now we're beginning to talk about, the reason that Keystone got this contract was really because of the price they set. When we were looking, if you look at how it was scored, the quality of, of what they were going to provide was, was below some others. It is the cost that they had or that they charged us that put them over. Okay, so our, the advantage that we got out of the lower cost is quickly beginning to erode where you lose a hundred thousand dollars here and you've got this money over here, not to mention what's happening to our citizens. When you have a problem, and there are all kinds of problems that are coming up every day, and you talk with them about it, will they give you a complete, when is this going to be, will they give you, they will not give you a completion date?
Yeah.
Okay, so here we have the Treasurer's Department handling all kinds of different problems and they change. This conversion helped. We got most of the abatements done, the one thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Yes, the refunds.
Seventy-one payments. But it created other problems, did it not?
Yes.
So it's a continuing treadmill for the interface between the citizens of Palatine County and a Treasurer's Department, which is working harder and harder. So the point of all of this is we've got to find a way to, rather than to have this meeting every month to have another list, is how are we going to bring closure to this? Okay, what are we going to do? What we're doing is not, is not, not working, okay? The grand conversion didn't take care of the problem. There are other problems. And we, as Ms. Timberlake said, he's not even going to consider the real estate side till he can run parallels, and he doesn't have a clue what he's going to find. But he doesn't have much competence, if you will, because of what's going on with personal property. And so I guess to the board and Brett is, we've got to find a way to bring closure. I want to stop talking about the individual problems. This is just me. I want, we've got to have, we've got, we need another, we need a body, we need a person, we need a facility of some type. The Treasurer's Department, this, this isn't their bailiwick. Okay, now Brett, I know you went to other vendors, okay? And of course, they didn't want to touch this. Why would they want to touch a mess like this? And that their competitor, they love, they love the fact their competitors having problems. Okay, in fact, it's Caroline County is coming in this week, is it not?
Yes, they are.
Coming down here to take a look at our system. How, how's it going? That's, that's a question. So I knew, I, you know, I don't have the answer. I, I, this is, this is areas way outside of my, my area of expertise, of history or anything else. But we've got to be working on closure. We've got to be working on, they've got to have dates. You know, when is the problem going to be taken care of? It can't be, it's just another amorphous problem that rolls in. So this needs to be structured, and we need to provide our constitutional, to constitutional officers with some help. And I don't know what form that takes, okay? I defer to my colleagues on that. But this is the third month I've had this discussion, okay, with Mrs. Nolley up here, and it's, it's not working. Unless someone else has a question for Mrs. Nolley, I'm, I'm. Just waves.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to agree with Becky and Mr. Cox. I'm, I met with Becky and her staff as part of an ongoing follow-up to see how things were going. Coming away from the meeting with again, another page of things that need to be fixed. To say this succinctly, what does closure look like and how do we get there? Now, I had proposed, yeah, how long ago? I've lost track of time. That we bring in a plumber. That was my name for someone who knew something about technology that either could guide us through the technical problems and bridge the gap with Keystone and/or, or in addition to, a legal solution. Now, you need the technical to decide what are you going to do? Because right now, we're operating with part of Keystone, but not all of Keystone. So if we're not going to use all of Keystone for whatever reason, what is the solution? Because now you're using third-party software with a system that's serving, what, ninety, ninety-five percent of the county? But where we're transacting millions of dollars of business in the Treasurer's Office and the Commission of Resumu, it's not working. And we're, Bill said we're going on three months. Actually, they were supposed to have this thing done November over a year ago. And we still don't have closure. So the question is, not going in as staff did, and Brett, I'm not being critical, but I don't think you're going to find somebody, a software vendor, another Keystone to come in. That's not the person I'm looking for. And I'd like the county attorney to weigh in. I know I'm kind of catching you off guard, Tom, but there has to be a legal and a technical solution to where we're at today because we're in no man's land. We could be here a year from now having the same conversation with Becky and her staff. I don't think any of us want that. So, Tom, can you weigh in and help us at all? I mean, if you have any experience where people in the middle of an implementation, it didn't work, we were at the, at the end, and you had to carve out a solution, either a legal solution, but anything that we do is going to require some technical background because it's going to have an effect on the rest of the system.
That's a loaded question.
It's called cannonball catching time.
I actually used to be a computer systems analyst in another life, and I've handled some computer transitions.
That's why I asked you, because I knew you had both a legal and a software background.
Couple of possible scenarios. One is, we ask Keystone for the source code on, on treasurer and commissioners modules, and we hire, I don't know what they're written in, but whatever the programming language is, we hire our own programmer. It's going to be expensive, but it's, it's a solution is, and if they don't want to give us a source code litigation, I mean, I think we have a rock solid case that's there to breach a contract. So, you know, that may be a solution is to ask them for the source code on, you say, you don't have to give us a source code on all of it, but we need the source code on what the treasurer and the commissioner are using because you obviously can't fix it. And we won't, and if we have our own dedicated programmer, you get a much better chance of getting it corrected.
And then the question will come in, Tom, with who's going to pay for that program or if we do get the source code?
Well, okay. And that's, that's the, that's maybe the deal with Keystone is we don't sue you if you give us the source code. We do sue you if you don't. And that's just a solution. And again, I don't know what language it's written in, but it's, I'm sure it's in a modern programming language, and there's going to be people out there, you know, I mean, you'll have to pay six figures to get somebody. But then you have somebody dedicated every single day that can be writing code and and trying to get adjustments. That's, in a past life, that's how we dealt with something one time is we wound up hiring our own programmer. I used to work in a manufacturing industry. We hired our own programmer to fix the, and we wound up, now, the problem is now you have custom modules, you can't get any upgrades anymore. I mean, that's, there's a downside to that as well. Now you, with the customized your modules, now all of a sudden, you can, you can't ever get upgrades from Keystone because you're, you've got your own individually drafted, created module. So that's the downside. The other alternative, which I had suggested to Brett, is do we scrap the whole thing and start over? And that, that may not be a viable solution. But I mean, the question becomes, how long can we continue in this solution? But that was, that was at least an alternative suggestion I made is we scrap the whole thing and then we sue Keystone and try and get some or bulk of our costs back for the breach of contract that we have with them because they, because they have not provided what they contracted to provide.
Tom, who's going to put together these options that I'm sure, speaking for myself, I would have a hard time delineating as you just did. Who, who is the person going to come up with these options and put them out there such that we can make an informed choice about the problems doing it this way versus the con, versus the benefits? You know, a pro-con analysis of each approach and guide us with a recommendation as to what approach is the best for the situation we find ourselves in?
Well, I would normally not set any of this out in public. I would normally say when they have a closed session. But I think Keystone needs to be unnoticed. Your lawyers advise you to sue them because he's right now publicly saying sue them. We have a good, solid case, and you can say, look, in a meeting, our lawyer is saying sue you. I, I think Brett, we have, we have skilled, well, I'll see John today, we have skilled IT director. I mean, I think the first approach would be for them to have a conversation with, I mean, John Wood is going to, is knowledgeable in computer. I think that'd be the first thing is to have a conversation with Keystone. Look, here's the conversation we had on Tuesday, the 23rd. You tell us if, if one of these might be a solution.
What I'm afraid of, Tom, is we get what we've gotten in the past. Well, we can do it, and that's been the mantra since, you know, the system first got started. You know, in lieu of requirements, definitions, but we can do that, no worries.
There's an alternative solution there. If that's what they say, great, bond it. Bond two hundred fifty thousand or three hundred thousand dollars with a deadline. And if you don't meet the deadline, we pull the bond and use that money to solve our problem. So that's another solution with them is to, to ask them to post a bond. Give us, give us a date where you're going to have these problems fixed with a bond attached that now all of a sudden they've got a financial incentive. And that's, I mean, we do it with roads, we do it with, with the other development.
Can I suggest that you, Brett and the IT director get together? And you go through what we have discussed at a very high level tonight. And then communicate back to the board as to what you think is the path forward in terms of next steps. Because right now we're struggling. The only thing we know is to. Give them the list of things, of problems, give assurances that it's going to be taken care of and come back the next month only to find out they haven't been taken care of.
I'll sit with Brett and John and we can brainstorm. Along these lines.
I, I would appreciate that. And then if, you know, Brett, if you through your contacts with Vaco. You know, maybe you'd like to, you know, reach out and see if anybody else has had this problem, if there's a go-to individual or firm that can assist us. We'd like to know that. Tom, you can do the same thing. You know, you've got the resources. But we need help. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Yes, sir, Mr. Cox. Another thought. We asked about resources from Keystone. One of the ways to make sure you're getting the resources for Keystone is to have them locate them in our office. Dedicated programmers in our office. All day long, working with us here. That's a different level of commitment, okay? And that is something. Back in the old days. You had mainframes. Company I worked for had five full-time IBM specialists on our staff. They, they paid for them, but they were on our staff because that's what that kind of a system required. And so you have the opportunity. To make sure you're getting the resources if they're actually located here and not working on something else. So that's just, that's just another possibility. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Cox. Anyone else have any comments?
No, one, Mr. Chad, I agree with Mr. Cox. I mentioned, said the same thing a couple of meetings ago. I think it was in September, I said the same thing, Mr. Cox just said that they should have a Keystone representative here. And also said that we should get rid of them, but that's, it's up to everybody else.
So you want to get them here to get rid of them?
Yeah. I'm tired of hearing about Keystone. Mr. Timely is not happy, our treasurer is not happy and that's not a good situation for the county.
The, thank you, Mr. Fox. Last year, January through March, we lost a hundred thousand dollars of tax collection. Because I understand when they, when they're in default, we can hit them up and scarf their money. Used to be that way with license registration, but I don't think it's that way anymore. I think it's changed. But will we eventually get that money?
We thought we would possibly recoup it this year, but since we haven't been able to send a file yet this year. And income taxes were, you could start filing today for income taxes, so whatever. Until we get the file down there, we're already going to be at the end of the hierarchy, so we're going to be at the bottom of the list to receive the funds.
Okay, are we going to get the money?
We'll get some of it, we're not going to get all of it.
When you said we won't get all of it, why won't we get all of it? Because it, I mean, there's people that don't qualify for refunds, you don't get that, I get that part of it. But anybody gets a refund, if you're, if you owe money to a locality, you're going to get the money. You may not get the money when the locality wants it, for whatever reason. We wanted it and couldn't get the documents down there on a timely basis for Keystone's errors or whatever. We're going to get the money though, I think, aren't we?
If we, if we do not have a file and they file their taxes and they're awarded their refund, we don't get the money.
But you, when you get the file and you file the taxes at that point, or you file with the state at that point, you're going to get the money.
Not if they've already been refunded.
Do they get one next year, maybe?
Possibly, but that's what we were hoping this year, but.
They get one the next year, maybe?
Exactly.
That's how it usually works, I think. If they don't, if they don't, you don't get the money this year and you file it.
We'll eventually get some money, we're just not going to get it all. The reason we have so much hanging from November and December is because we didn't, weren't able to collect money. And in January through March, when you were getting possibly the bigger refunds. The governor did the two hundred and fifty and five hundred dollar rebates. We have over a thousand hits on customers with that, where we took their entire rebate. And we can't post it yet because we, there's not a way to do that, apparently.
Unless you posted it manually.
Unless we manually go in.
Post the money if you took your staff and did a thousand of them manually posting.
Take weeks because it's.
Put the money in the bank at that point.
Because within your account number, you have several different bill numbers, so we have to calculate how much of that money goes to each one bill.
So, tell me something, with all these problems, why is Caroline County coming to look at this?
That is a good question. I guess I will find out Wednesday. They are coming, they have a meeting with Keystone on Thursday, and so they wanted to come and see where we were on our system. I believe their contract has a caveat that. We need to be functioned, or they need to be satisfied with where we are before they go live in the Treasurer's Office.
For the last year, maybe I'm exaggerating by two or three months. I haven't heard anything good about Keystone in the Treasurer's Office of Palatine County.
I mean, we, we have very small accomplishments, which we do praise them for, but definitely the, the setbacks outweigh the accomplishments.
Right. And I do think that, you know, I'm kind of like Mr. McClung, I'm kind of tired of hearing about it. When did Palatine County approve Keystone? Do you know that, Brett?
Twenty twenty? I want to say we picked, pick our vendor in twenty twenty.
I remember we paid a consultant to help us decide and we had a work group of. Constitutional officers and other people that said, you know, this is the way to go.
And at the time, we provided Keystone with all the information and how we wanted the system to work. And we were repeatedly told, yes, we can do that, we can do that. Yes, they can do it, but not the way it needs to be done.
Right. And. In doing so, there was probably some validity to what Mr. Williams said there. I think that, you know, they were probably the lowest one on the price scale. I, my memory, I remember there was like three companies and I think they were the lowest ones. Well, I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, we need to do something because. We're not getting anywhere with it and we paid, I don't know, how much did we pay? A million plus?
Seven fifty.
Seven hundred fifty thousand. And. When we go outside of that, I think the next vendor up was substantially higher, substantially higher. So it'll be more money.
Mr. Chairman, the contract was signed in November of twenty twenty.
November of twenty twenty is when it was signed. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. So we kind of have a solution there in terms of how we're going to go forward with that, Mr. Latchey, Mr. Chodak. We're going to take some action with that. Or speak, push the envelope a little farther.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nonley. Okay, next up.
Brett, next one, updating you on the Eastern Convenience Center. So construction of a Eastern Convenience Center, obviously something that's been in the county's plans for a long time. Last year, we proposed to look at doing that through a PPEA proposal. We received one proposal, which we've been working through the process on. The applicant recently submitted us their detailed proposal, which is the, the next step in the process. So just sharing that with you tonight. The next step in considering the PPA officially would be taking this proposal to the working group. They will evaluate it and then make a recommendation to me about whether we should move forward with this. And then, then we bring that recommendation to the board for consideration and requires a public hearing as well. The working group is scheduled to meet next Tuesday on this. So we'll be getting together, reviewing it and hopefully leaving that meeting with a recommendation. Whether to proceed or not proceed, which we will bring to the board. So happy to answer any questions. That's where we are in the process on this one right now.
Right. Board members, any comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
Who's in the working group?
It is on our staff, planning director, myself. Economic Development Manager. Deputy County Administrator for Public Works, Mr. Melis from Public Works. And then Representative from CVWMA. And then we wanted to bring in one outside person who has experience, but is not, you know, vested in this one way or another. So the Deputy County Administrator from Hanover County who oversees transportation, public works. And works closely with economic development, so all of the areas this project would touch on.
Okay. And when you guys review this, are you going, is what I see, what you're going to be reviewing, kind of the long and the short of it?
Yeah, that's, we put it here in an excerpt from it, the entire proposal is on the county website, but this is the bulk of it. So they'll have the full document to review, but mostly what you're looking here, the, the main things they'll be looking at is the site layout itself. Are there any things we want to change as far as the functionality, the, the number of units, how they're spaced? I think the value, everybody has different experience in building and designing and approving these, so if there's opportunities. You know, to, to save in one area, maybe this area looks higher, this looks low, so validating the numbers. But yeah, for the most part, they'd be looking at that site plan and their, the plan they've proposed, or the timeline's realistic. Is there anything missing here?
If we have concerns, like as a board member, when is the best time to bring that up? Now?
Earlier rather than later, sure. I mean, the, the earlier in the process, the more we can try and find solutions or make changes, so.
Okay.
If there's any tonight, certainly, if, if not, as you take the time and look at it, you know, feel free to reach out anytime with those as well. But yeah, certainly sooner because we can make changes potentially.
Okay, um. I, for me, before I would proceed, I would take a very, very hard look at this. A couple of things that concern me. If you look at the description of the project, it's a high-level description. You go right into phase one. So phase one, you get the property transaction. Hence, they get the property right away, all that. Phase two, they get the entitlements, rezoning, construction plan, design, et cetera. Only till phase three, do we have a hard construction bid. So in other words, we give up everything right up front and we have no idea what it even costs. They estimate four point four million. VDOT estimates construction costs at ten point five million. So if this guy can shave six million off of our construction costs, why don't we have him building roads everywhere? You know, and so my concern is, why are we giving everything up before we even have a hard construction bid? And when that construction bid comes out at, which I think everybody sitting at this table knows. There's no way that road going to get built for four point four million dollars. We have a turn lane that's two point two million. So what happens when the construction bid comes to ten million dollars? Who's on the line for that? Who's building the roads to the convenience center? What's the size of the convenience center? Where are the engineering schematics? You know, my point is we have twelve pages of engineering schematics for a concession stand. We're looking at a ten million dollar deal and we don't have, we have three paid, three pages and two maps that we can't really read. Has Tom reviewed this proposal? What about this mutually agreed upon rezoning? What does that look like? What if we don't mutually agree upon anything? In the proposal, it says we're going to be paying for all legal costs. So does that mean we're paying for their lawyer? Branchway development, Mr. Urbines. What analysis have we done for the estimated tax benefit for the proposed rezoning? Are we purchasing and installing the equipment for the convenience center? What are they providing? I thought when we went into this deal that they were supposed to actually build the convenience center, according to them. They're, they're not really, they're, I don't really know what they're doing. What if we only build the convenience center and if the county built the road, what would that look like? I'm a little concerned that we, we don't have an engineering schematic. It's an architect that did the drawing. I don't know if that's typical or not typical. I think that, I just would like the working group, when you guys look at this, that, I mean. Nobody wants a road more than I do and for a developer to come in and do that, that would be fantastic. But what I don't want is the taxpayer to get screwed because we didn't do our due diligence and we get to phase three and they're like, well, sorry. The hard construction numbers come back at ten point five million and we already gave up the land and we gave the rezoning. And what do we have? Nothing. And, and we're on the line for building a convenience center. So the only other thing that, with your working group, I don't know if you want to add one more person in there, perhaps a. Somebody that's more versed in doing these, and, and I, I don't mean this is a slight against you guys, but I don't think any of you have done them. The developer that we're working with hasn't really done them. And if we're going to go and get in bed with somebody, let's make sure it's a, a strong partner where the, the county gets the best benefit. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Carmack.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
It's a question for Brett. Brett? Don't you all have drawings at this point? For the road?
Yeah, not the full, not the full plans that we would submit to DEQ, for example, to build it, but these are more, more detailed. VDOT anti-EQ.
Okay, let me. Let me address some Mrs. Carmack's concern. We're both on the TPO. At the November one meeting in Ashland, I brought forward the difference in the cost estimates. If it was a locally administered program, the cost was much lower for a project. If the project was administered by VDOT, it was much higher. That was a good conversation because the ideology of the conversation was why were we having these cost overruns? Of twenty-seven, twenty-eight, some cases. Exponentially even more than that. So I wanted a question, I wanted that question answered and it's still ongoing. One of the things that came out in that discussion. VDOT now uses a book, a manual. For, for estimating projects, road projects. Everybody has to use it in VDOT. It's risk averse. So in other words, they're plugging the highest number based on what can go wrong. So if you're asking why suddenly, caught a doubt, you're jumped. From what it was for years to now to a higher number is because VDOT is administering the project and now they're having to come forward with the cost estimates built on the risk averse manual. That's the answer for that. The other questions, I think we can get answers. I certainly would like to, you know, hear what, you know, Brett? Do you have any, any problems with Mrs. Carmack's request?
No, no, they're all, all good, important questions that we want to make sure are addressed as we move this forward, or if the board chooses to move forward with this, so. Yeah, we'll make sure in the working group or otherwise, we address all of those and bring you back answers to those questions, certainly.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, Mr. Cox. First of all, Mrs. Carmack said she's going to be squinty-eyed. That's what we're supposed to be, squinty-eyed, okay, that's, that's, that's good. But I got a little confused and I need your help, Brett. When we look at description of the project. There's, there are phases. But the contract we sign will have them all together. It's not, you do one. Or do you do phase one and it's, it's over and then you move to phase two, or is it a coordinated? That's, I understand Mrs. Carmack's concern, if you're okay. We've given you all of this, now we go to here, but isn't all of this tied together?
Yeah, it, it would be, and certainly if we move forward with this, the, the contract, Mr. Latchey. Mr. Latchey would be working with us to make sure it has all the proper protections in it. And if there were, I'm, I'm part of that, I assume, would be a clawback revision that if we transfer the, the property or some of the property and then the project goes sideways later, there would be. Certainly a way to reclaim and get that property back. It wouldn't be that we made the transfer and then it's, it's gone. I believe we did that with the War Memorial Building where there's a provision, if they didn't meet all of the terms of their contract, it would come back to the county. So certainly I, I wouldn't recommend moving forward. if I don't feel we have a contract in working with the county attorney that would give us all the protections, were there to be an issue or something. But yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? There's no comments, there's. Well, from my perspective, PPEA. Has Palatine County ever been in a PPEA before, Mr. Shaw?
I believe we looked at doing another, I'm forgetting which now, project previously using this. But I don't think we've completed one. And Tom, Tom Shaking said no.
Never been involved in one.
We adopted our PPA ordinance in 2014, which allows us to do one, but we haven't done one since then. So we have not done one since.
2014?
Yeah, we adopted.
That's when we adopted it.
That's when we adopted it.
And now we've got a working group and nope, no slight at all, as Ms. Carmack said. But we had a working group for this Keystone Plan Two. And I'm looking how this is working. I, I don't feel real comfortable with it, to be frank with you. I am one that would definitely be in favor of a parallel road to Route 60, connecting South Creek to Luckstone. Absolutely, I'd be in favor of that. But I don't want to get in. And then all of a sudden, this is not working and we need to go buy a new system. Or we need to go fight a lawsuit and negotiate and go through that process. I'm going to echo the experience in the PPEA realm. The developer, no experience in PPEA. I don't even think there's experience in developing. The contractor, Branchway, from my knowledge, unless I'm wrong, and I'm sure somebody will say it if I am, I don't think they've ever done a PPEA agreement either. We initially, Palatine County initially set aside, I think the number was 1.5 million dollars from the previous board to build an Eastern Convenience Center. This board agreed to buy a piece of property in excess of 800,000 dollars. Now, we want to trade properties with somebody. So they'll put a road in that'll take us from South Creek over to Luckstone. We get the, the pricing to do it of the, just the road itself is 4.4 million dollars. VDOT says the construction is 10.6 million. It's 4,400 or 4,570 feet long. There was an extension put in from Luckstone over to Anderson Highway that was 2,737 feet long, almost half the distance. And that one cost 6,800,000 dollars in 2017, 2018. August of 2018. I can't speak for everybody else up here, but I certainly get the phone calls about the convenience center in Palatine County. I think the previous board had the foresight to say, yep, we need an eastern, we need to move and we go. And this board, I think, wants that same thing. And if we can get a parallel road, I, I think that's a good thing too. But I've got some real serious questions when it comes down to the, the, the Phase One Carter Gallyer Extension, which was from Luckstone to Anderson Highway. That took five years from beginning to end. It took five years. Now, if the citizens in the county want to wait five years, or maybe it's four, this proposal says it's going to be 36 months. And this would be done, this project would be completed. All work completed, 36 months. There probably are, to agree with Mr. Williams' comments, private entities that will do it for less than the Virginia Department of Transportation. I probably wouldn't disagree with that. But it is a substantial amount difference when you look at it. Substantial amount. And we talked one time about, you know, it, it's, they're using a different scenario of how they're coming up with their estimates on building roads or, or whatever it is. And then the other side of it, you know, we, we say the inflation factor has become extremely important in everything, everything. The price of eggs, the price of everything has gone up. So the price of building roads has probably gone up too. I just have a lot of concerns. I don't want to make the same mistake we've already made of going down a road and, and doing something and we get halfway in because it sounds really good. It's the lowest price out there and we're going to take advantage of a great opportunity. We can probably use Mr. Latchney's expertise and put some parameters in there for the clawback. If we, if we get into this and it goes over or the timeframe gets in there. But I got a lot of questions and a lot of concerns. And I've watched the work groups and I, I watch how these prices, they're, they're not even close. I watch how VDOT takes five years from the, the PE implementation on Phase One that began in May of 2015. The, the questions are pretty strong. And i, i, if, if we're looking out for the taxpayers' money, we need to have some questions and some conversation, how we're going to go about this. It's a good thing to get excited. It's a great plan. I like the idea of the parallel road. I think it helps, there's a lot of reasons to do it. But I don't want to get halfway in the creek and all of a sudden, I can't get to the other side. So I think we need a lot more work, a lot more information. And maybe there's information there, maybe there's maps there. I don't, I don't see them, I haven't seen them. And I know that when we initially started, it was 1.5 million. We spent 800,000, that left 700. And this is saying, with this PPEA, the convenience center is 1.7 million. And Phase Five says, convenience center opening, installation of convenience center equipment and commencement of operations by the county. When I read that, convenience center opening, installation of convenience center equipment and commencement of operations. Sure, we have to supply the staff to, to operate it. But the equipment, I don't know. When it comes to a convenience center, if I go over to Mitchell Road, it looks like you're, you're clearing some property and you're putting some asphalt down and you're going to have some utilities, water, sewer, foam, a building, restrooms. And you're just clearing a piece of property. That when we paid quite a few thousand dollars for SCS to look at this, they said the optimum size of a convenience center for the larger properties that exceed the optimum, optimal sizing criteria of approximately five acres, the potential for an additional county facility development. They're saying five acres. And I don't know if it's five or seven or whatever that we use. We have 19 acres now, right at it. In the initial plan, when I look at that from June of 2020, that was put out by the same engineering company that we already paid thousands of dollars to. On that particular parcel, has the convenience center on the south side of the proposed road. It actually has a potential baseball field next to it, a parking and spectator area. And it also has on the back side, the north side of the road, area for future county development. Maybe that's the way to go. I don't know. But a, a, what I see now, I think we need more information than what we have. And I'm certainly not going to pontificate that I'm an expert in regards to convenience centers and all this. But a, 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 VDOT says 10 and a half million. And this proposal is 4.4 million. It's a lot of money in difference. Just creates a little question in my mind. Phase One, from Luckstone to Anderson Highway was five years. Sort of creates a little suspicion in my mind. How do we do this in 36 months and get a convenience center out of it? I guess where I'm at is, I'm okay with it going to the working group and you guys doing a little more investigation. But there's definitely going to be questions that come out when we get there. And I'd like to see, you know, much more specific information. Okay, so moving on.
Mr. Chairman.
Let's go to.
Mr. Chairman, I have some comments.
Oh, yes, go right ahead.
I don't think it's a person sitting up here on this stage that doesn't have concerns about being a good steward of taxpayer dollars. And I'm sure when we get the replete information about this project, the questions that you and Mrs. Carmack have raised can be addressed. That's the whole purpose for this exercise. I talked to Brett about what was going to happen tonight. He said, you're just getting the project put in front of you at a high level and you're moving it to the committee to do the scrubbing, to come back, you know, with the detail that all of us want. And I'm less hung up on the VDOT cost. They say it's 10 million. What is, what is the latest estimate on Carter Gallyer when we did smart scale? Was it 19 million?
Uh, so they, they updated the numbers last week, last week, 15 million, I think.
Okay, 15 million. If you just look at that number, as I did, you know, at the TPO, I'm going, what the heck? Are they locally administered projects? Are people gaming the system so they can get the federal dollars and beat out the other people in the region as we compete for those dollars? You know, I wanted an explanation. Mark Rivlet finally came forward in that discussion and explained that now they're using a manual across the state. It means that those estimates are risk averse. It's going to mean you're going to get higher estimates. And my concern naturally was if I don't administer a project, which we don't here in Palatine County, those estimates are going to be higher because VDOT is going to be doing the cost assessments. So again, when I got, had a meeting with the folks down at the new headquarters, talking to Miles, staff, there are reasons for locally administered projects, just like I'm sure there's going to be for PPAs, to be cheaper. Put aside the risk averse manual that VDOT has to use now. But there's going to be reasons. I'm going to take a deep breath. I'm going to follow the process, see where it takes me. I'm not going to jump to any conclusions about what is and what isn't. And I'm going to let staff, this committee, bring back the information to answer the questions. I, I don't, I don't fear that conversation. I'm looking forward to it. That's my comments.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for that, Mr. Williams. And, and I agree with you, I don't fear it either. That's what I want is the information. It's like in, in the past, when we've talked about rezonies, we want to go to the experts to find out what the traffic count is, to find out if we need a turn lane. And those experts is the Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT. And that's why I always like to hear all the information I can get. And then we'll sit down and evaluate as a board collectively and see if that's something that we want to do with the taxpayers' money.
But I'm, I'm just saying, Mr. Chairman, as a cautionary statement, I can refer you to the November one meeting, you know, of the TPO in Ashland. Y'all can all watch the video and I would encourage you to watch it because that was an important meeting. Because I couldn't account for the differences. It was brought up by, you know, Gushlin. Gushlin wanted to know where, you know, why some of the projects were coming in 100% over cost is because of a variety of different things. But one of the main drivers was VDOT's conversion to their manual, which is different from locally administered projects.
But we'll find. Yeah, exactly. Let's just get the information with the working group. We'll go, we'll go forward from there. Okay. New business.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, on that, just the, the process of working group. We'll review it. Let's say they make a positive recommendation, maybe with changes, maybe with comments. But assuming they do, the next technical step in the process would be scheduling a public hearing. But I don't want to be presumptuous and get ahead of the board. Do you all want to see the working group's recommendation? Then you all authorize us to set that public hearings. Otherwise, the next time you would see this would be at a public hearing.
Maybe we have a workshop on it.
That's a good idea. Absolutely. Oh, absolutely. Agree completely.
Yep. Complete.
All right. Only item under new business is proposed amendments to our animal running at large ordinance. So this, this would not be changed tonight. But just seeing if the board wants to initiate this code amendment. And then we would bring it back, probably the February meeting for a public hearing. But essentially, we've been having difficulty enforcing or implementing our running at large ordinance. The magistrate has pointed out some issues with it. So working with them, Sheriff's Office, Animal Control and County Attorney, we have some proposed amendments to bring it in line with state code, make it actually enforceable by Animal Control, Sheriff's Office and the public. So again, just looking for you all to move it forward if you, if you wish tonight.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Scott. In my district, what you're doing with dogs can be a, a very touchy thing. I have taken this to the Virginia Hunting Dog Alliance and they don't have any problems with it. Okay, so the hunting community has had a chance to look at it and says, this is with code, this is fine. So. Good. Anyone else, any comments?
I just got one question.
Sure.
On seizures, impoundments, any dog observed.
What page?
It's on the page 93. Second line, we read, any dog observed or captured while unlawfully running at large may be seized, impounded and disposed of by an animal control officer or other law enforcement pursuant to Virginia Code 32-65. What is that code? What is the timeframe for?
Mr. Sheriff, can you help us out with that, please?
Because it sounds like he was killed a dog, so. I know it's not true, but I don't.
Thank you. But Sergeant Bozart can explain.
I just need clarification on that.
The code section mandates the number of days an animal must be kept for anything like that happens. What is?
It's five days if it doesn't have a collar or any kind of identification. So if it doesn't have like a clipped ear or a microchip, could have a tattoo like your social security number on its stomach or in its thigh or just a straight line for like a spay or a neuter. That's something that would indicate that the dog has an owner, it has a collar, something like that. Then it's a five day hold. If it doesn't, if it does have that, it's a 10 day hold. If it doesn't have that, it's a five day hold.
And the important thing to, to note there, that has been the state law for 20 years or better. And we, as a county, our numbers are much more liberal. We generally don't use them unless there's an injury involved to an animal or some other medical reason. So that we, we extend much past five days as policy.
Answered my question.
Anyone else, any questions? Thank you very much and thank you for what you do with these animals. I mean, I, I, you guys do a great job getting them out to the public and covering, researching, rescue is what I'm looking for. Thank you very much. We're all, stop that. We're all in, in good shape of moving that forward, right? Does anybody agree to that, Mr. Williams, Mr. Scott, Carmack? All right, cool. Just do a second public comment period this evening. Coming down to speak, you have three minutes as an individual and up to five minutes if you're representing a group. Name and address.
ID number 3492, Richardson, Powhatan, Virginia.
In reference to Keystone, it's McClung, you hit nail on the head. Need to get rid of. For the last year, that's all I've heard is Keystone, Keystone. I like thank Mr. Williams for bringing it forward, the legal action and all that. If I treated one of my customers the way they've been treated this county and us and y'all, I've been at business a long time ago. Sooner or later, you gotta put your foot down and just say enough is enough. And we may have spent more money. But I feel sorry for Mr. Timberlake and Miss Nunley because they're the ones catching the blunt from the citizens to a certain degree. They don't, a lot of people don't know what's going on. All they know is they're not getting their refund, they're not getting this, they're upset. So hopefully Mr. Lackney can give you all the proper legal guidance and kick these people to the curb. They, I think he said, put a bond on them, do something, get it done, because I feel sorry for them. And I know this is gonna get dumped in y'all's lap, y'all have been involved in the process, but please, let's take care of it. In reference to the economic development zone, whatever you want to call it, we have a comprehensive plan. Now, I think it's seventy percent commercial, thirty percent residential. Is that correct? We've got it there. I don't agree with it, but it's there. So let's try to keep that going and move forward with it and just stick within the guideline. I know a lot of people say that the comprehensive plan is just a guide, it's something to work off of, flexibility. But most people in this county have said before, they don't want multifamily units, especially up in the L-60. So please keep that in consideration. This thing about convenience center, it's been going around and around and I agree, y'all need to find out what's going on. This side road, y'all, everybody keeps talking about Carter-Gallier Boulevard and all that. You know, who's gonna benefit off of Carter-Ballard Boulevard? It has to be a little bit way to get around, maybe easy running up and down, get off sixty. But I always say follow the money and see who's benefited from it. And whoever's benefiting from it is who should pay for it. I want to ask the county residents to pay for something that some developer or someone, I guess, is gonna benefit off of. And one other thing, we're talking about the tax code, I always hear, you know, you know, we always hear the budget coming for it. You know, it's down the road. We know it's coming. What are we gonna do about tax rate? I will say again, you can't find, anybody cannot find ten percent waste in any organization, whether it's own budget, county, school or the own business, they're not looking hard enough. Please consider that coming up. Thank you very much.
Anyone on Zoom? We'll close the public comment period. County attorney comments?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Any administrator comments?
No comments.
Board comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
As everyone knows, the governor unveiled his plan to make Virginia home. That's a series of initiatives and it made the newspaper change to the part where it got into the zoning and the ordinances of localities. There was a quote from Chris Winslow over in Chesterfield regarding the initiative because Chris felt like a lot of us, that this was shifting the burden to the localities to pay for the cost of community services, taking away the tools that the Journal Assembly had given us to be able to plan, manage and spend. We've always been accused of, you have the tools, but you don't have the political will. Right now, one of the bills we're carrying forward, the governor's initiative is ending House, of course, the Senate and the companion bills, House Bill fourteen seventy-three, seventy-three. What this bill does, it takes away transparency. Or it certainly erodes transparency by no longer requiring a descriptive summary of the proposed zoning action. It allows just a tax map number in lieu of a street number, street address at the location of the zoning action and removes the requirement to state the general usage and density of the proposed zoning action. Eliminates the requirement for an extra public hearing and the land is owned to a more intensive use classification that was contained in the previous public notice. Now, all of us don't have to think about it that long to know that that greatly reduces what the public is hearing about business that we're gonna be conducting. But for anybody's information, that's gonna be heard in subcommittee number two on Thursday morning at seven-thirty, January twenty-sixth. What I'm gonna ask Brett to do, we belong to VACA. What I would like to know, and I can go and pretty much determine, I believe, going through the committees to see what bills are on the docket. For example, county citizen town, CCT. And I can pretty much pick out the ones I think are ones that are being patroned for the governor's initiative. But I'm sure VACA has got it. What are the bills that carry forward the governor's initial for Virginia Home? And I think we need to look at those and I think we need to have a discussion about taking a position and supporting that position that the General Assembly and committee. Because this is important to us. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anyone else? Comments?